Are you ready? Are you ready? Kat, are you ready? You all, are you ready? Good morning. On behalf of Mayor Pro Tem Whitehead, the City Commission Manager Canton and staff, welcome to the business meeting of the City of Truth or Consequences, the City Commission. It is now 9:02 on October 24th. I would ask you if you have any device on you that's going to make a noise and interrupt the proceedings, if you please shut those down, it would be appreciated. Madam Clerk, can we have roll call, please?
Honorable Steve Green.
Here.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead.
Here.
Honorable Kathy Clark.
There.
Honorable Roth Heschler.
Here.
Honorable Paul Bucker.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item is 15 seconds of silent meditation. Please join me. The next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Bucker.
And to the Republic, for which we stand, our nation, our God, and the municipal citizens, all.
And before we go to the next item, which is the approval of the agenda, I'd just like the public to know that I have reached out to the winner of the $1.6 billion lottery and have asked them to take a look at Truth or Consequences as their new home. So hoping we will keep you informed as we work forward on that one. On the agenda, fellow commissioners, what I'd like to do is this. I would like to postpone G1 and 2, which are the public hearings, and H1 and 2, which is the action that the commission would or would not take on the public hearings. This will give the opportunity for the public to not only hear the presentations at this meeting, but we will bring back the two applicants. I will give you those dates when we get into the presentations, so you'll have an opportunity to hear their presentations twice. And also, staff, council, and myself felt it would be a little bit awkward to negotiate in public with two entities that are vying for the same thing. I had a real problem with that, and staff did, and legal did also, they supported that. So with that said, if there's no problems with my fellow commissioners, I would like the motion to that extent.
Excuse me, Mayor, did I understand G1 and 2 are being postponed and just H1, or H1 and H2?
H1 and 2.
No, G1, G2, H1, H2. And actually, Commissioner Clark, I could give you the dates. Verizon will be back on November 14th to make their hearing, for the public hearing. And Gravity Pad will be coming back on December 12th to make their request for special use permit. And again, a special use permit is not a negotiation of dollars, it is strictly requesting the use of something. And when we get into the public hearings, then we'll move forward on that. And I've got it tentatively set up for a final vote, because we don't want to drag this on too long, on January 9th, which will be our first meeting in January to bring this back for an ultimate decision.
You know, and I think actually that an advance to this from the commission's standpoint is, with the consent of presenters, I think after the presentations are made, you can ask them informal questions, you know, preliminary questions today, so I can get a better idea about some of your concerns, and presenters are okay with that, and then you'll have a better feel of what's going on with the actual public hearings at a later date.
Right.
Mr. Attorney Rubin, I thought we already had given permission to the Verizon outfit on February 14th of 2018.
I think that if I'm not mistaken, Commissioner Clark and Tracy...
That's Amy McKenzie.
Yeah, Tracy is in the audience. If I'm not mistaken, the permission was for staff to move forward, but we had not taken a final vote on that. Is that correct, Tracy?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, so I missed him.
And I believe also, Commissioner Clark, I think actually both presenters are aware of what we were going to suggest, and I think everybody's okay with what we discussed, is my understanding.
Yeah, we actually, Commissioner Clark, and I know where you're coming from, it's valid points, is we did reach out with both the applicants to make sure they felt comfortable with this process.
Well, we were looking for one of them.
And they both did, right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I will stand for motion for approval of the agenda, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the agenda for our October 24th meeting as noted by Mayor Green.
Okay, I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Whitehead, a second by Second Commissioner Heschler. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, carries unanimously. Thank you very much. The next item is number C on our agenda, comments from the public. Remember, the three-minute rule applies, and if you have anything that you want to make part of the business meeting, a permanent record of this meeting, please put it in the black box next to the microphone. There's a three-minute rule. Step up to the plate, give us your name, your address, and the floor is yours. Yes, sir.
Good morning, all. My name is John Davis. I'm a recently returned resident of TRC, having been in northern Nevada the past 10 years. And back before I left, we used to have these meetings in the evening. I think, I'm not sure when they moved to morning meetings, but morning meetings, in case nobody noticed, I think actively adversely impacts the ability of the citizens of TRC to engage in the civic affairs of their community. So I would ask that you consider moving the time back to evening hours for meetings such as this, and I would ask that the city clerk maybe put that on the agenda for discussion at some future meeting. Other than that, I wanted to say it's possible, and I don't want to go this route because it would cost another special election, it would be possible to get signatures and do this as a ballot initiative, but special elections, as a general rule, I'm against them, they're expensive, and there's, I don't see any need to do that, not at this point anyway. Other than that, I will have to leave before the meeting is over, but I'm, no way am I going to miss the meeting, the part where you can make the presentation to the officer. That having been said, I'm about, I've got a minute and a half left, and it ain't going to take that. I'm the guy, in case nobody's noticed yet, who gets out with his O'Toole Torres small sign, waving it at traffic up and down. I support her because of the ethical lapses of Yvette Harrell, but anyway, I expect each and every one of you folks to wave at me and say hi when you see me out on the ground. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, and welcome back to our community. Good morning, Commissioners. Ron Fan, 316 North Fosh. Mr. Green, I have to rebut your argument of last week, or your reply to a public comment in which you supported and defended the colonia as something wonderful. That is unfortunately analogous to putting polish on a broken pot. It does not hold water. Colonias, by definition, what is a colonia? This is by the Bureau of Business and Research at UNM. What is a colonia? The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development defines colonias as rural communities in close proximity to the U.S. border lacking access to basic services such as water, sewer, or housing. Official socioeconomic data on these communities has typically been scarce, making it difficult for government agencies to secure federal funding that could improve the colonia infrastructure. I believe that the monies that are available are supposed to end the colonia status. In other words, start providing the proper infrastructure for the people that you serve. Instead, we want to improve things like the infrastructure around the Sierra Grande Hotel, where I don't believe people are suffering from too much economic distress. It's a poor community. It is not a tourist community. It is a retirement community for people of limited means, and you continuously ignore it, you do nothing whatsoever to improve the situation for the people who live here, while you pander to people that you think are going to drop dollars in your pockets. And when it comes to the same analogy being used for Mr. Ashbaugh and Mr. Townsend, the cracked pot that they are polishing is a chamber pot. Anyone else like to address the commission? Yes, sir.
Stanley Rickert, 1705 Carey Street, TRC. I spoke to Officer in charge of enforcement of the codes, Ray Chavez, about a week ago, and was discussing with him a six-foot fence that's supposed to be a privy fence around the property next door to me, to the north, that has a bunch of recreational vehicles stored on it. Those recreational vehicles are way above the six-foot-high fence, I told him. How come they are not being moved to another area for location where they're not being observed from anybody that walks by or drives by? They can see, they're 12 to 15 feet tall, which means the six-foot fence does not hide their ugliness, their detractiveness, and it does not have the, what you call the look that a residential area should have. And that's what this is, is a residential area over there. It has a commercial business on a residential property. It has a commercial storage lot on a residential property. I'm wondering when you guys are going to wake up to the fact that, you know, he's violating code, even though Mr. Rubin, the city attorney for Truth or Consequences, wrote a letter saying he did not need to enforce it, there is no proof that he is legally allowed to have a business there or do anything of the such. And when I spoke to Ray Chavez, the code enforcement officer, he didn't have a clue as to what I was referring to as to six-foot-high privy fence. And I told him, well, it's in our ordinances, it comes under the ordinances in the occupancy permit for Part III, I believe it is, that they can have a storage lot outside for storage of small items, but no bigger than 500 square feet. That would mean, you know, an acre and a half, almost an acre and a half of storage is a little bigger than 500 square feet. So I'm wondering, you know, why this is taking place and why it's being allowed, and what you're going to do about it for future, you know? Because wouldn't you allow one person to do something like that? They'd all jump on the bandwagon and they continue to put more stuff in there, they're storing stuff in there that is illegal, it has no right to be there in a residential property, okay? That's all I'd like to let you know, you know? And I appreciate the fact that you're going to do something about the Ralph Edwards Park, that, you know, people are driving over, you know, and making rucks and stuff like that. You're going to, you know, do something so they can, you know, have a better place over there, so we'll see how that works out, all right?
Mr. Rickert, just for the benefit of the commission, could you please tell us the address that you were referring to?
The address north of me on Carey Street is 1715 Carey Street.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to address the commission? Going once, going twice, saved by the bell. Ron.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mayor, I, oh, first, I'd just like to know, just an FYI, that when I got off the golf course the other day, there's a motorhome for sale sitting in the golf course parking lot, which belongs to the manager of the golf course. But what perturbed me was that there was one of the greenskeepers working on that, trying to fix something on that motorhome. I didn't think that was appropriate. I was looking at my utility bill, and on the back of it says usage, and it says, "If you have electric meter per city code, you will be charged for trash service." I looked and could not find anything related, those two words, trash and electric meter, in the codes. But when I went looking, the first thing that popped up when I pulled up the code of ordinance of the City of TRC, New Mexico, and on page 2, which is what really shocked me, it says, at the time, it says, "The mayor is Elmer D. Dare." It says, "Stephanie is the mayor pro tem, rest is so." Bobby Allen's name is on here, rest is so. Freddie Torres's name is on here, none of y'all's names on here. And Walter Armio was the city manager. If I was looking at that, I wonder, I think that's back in the early 90s. But when I started going through that, I was looking for the codes, I pulled up the municipal codes, and I found some interesting things, that the planning and zoning board has not had, or is in existence right now, and hasn't had a meeting since 11:05 of 2013. Shouldn't we have a planning and zoning board? Evidently, we're not advertising well enough, and the papers should be helping all, trying to get some volunteers for that. I was looking for minutes and agenda for an impact fee board. It's not in that website, it's not under municipal codes, or minutes, and meetings for all the boards. When I was looking for some information on the public utility advisory board for minutes, the last minutes was a video on 6/18 of 18, and the next available minutes on that site was on 3/17 of 14. So file maintenance has really not been taken care of. So, but I did see that they're, you're advertising for a new city commissioner, manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Anybody else like to address the commission? All right, thank you for your comments. The next item on the agenda is number D, response to public comment. Is there any response from the commission, anything to be heard? Manager Canton.
I have a couple of responses to Mr. Davis. I wanted to let you know on the request for evening meetings, we did just bring that up, the first meeting in July, but if the commission would like us to revisit that, I'd be happy to at your direction. But we did just revisit whether we wanted to change meeting times at our open meetings at resolution time. So I wanted to clarify that for you. And Mr. Pacorek, I appreciate the comments on the golf course, I'll definitely check into that for the RV. And the P and Z minutes and meetings as well, we can take a look at that. Actually, we had already discussed, all the boards and committees really hadn't been kept up with, and so we are also looking into that. So those are my responses. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd just like to follow up, Mr. Davis, on Manager Canton. We did discuss it, and one of the overriding factors to keep it during the day, and as you know, the county meets at 10 o'clock in the morning, and Elephant View, I think, at 1 o'clock in the afternoon, is that it's a long day. And for us to be at our best, which is what you demand of us, starting at 6 o'clock at night, and sometimes our meetings do get long in the tooth, because I talk a lot, and we don't break until 9 o'clock at night, it's a real long day for some of us who are working and have jobs during the day, and then, so that was the reason that we felt that we could best serve this community and be at our best in the morning rather than at nighttime. Okay, the next item, is there any other response to public comment? Okay, the next item is under presentations. This is always the best part of the agenda. So the first one is, and I'm going to turn this over to Lieutenant Baker and Chief Apodaca, presentation of recognition of Officer Marin for life-saving award.
Hello, Commissioners, Mayor Pro Tem. It's always exciting to me, anytime our patrolmen, our department in general does a good job on something, I'm always proud of them. It's even more rewarding when they do something outstanding and get recognized for it in the community. I think it's very important, anytime they do do things that is above and beyond what they're asked to do, that they are recognized for that. It gives them the confidence and motivation that we hope, where that they're out there every day putting their lives on the line for the citizens of TRC. So with that being said, on September 28, 2018, Officer Marine responded to a house fire. During that time, the residents were still in the house along with their animals. Officer Marine went in there without thinking of his own safety, again, because we're not trained to fight fires. He went into the house, was able to get both of the residents out safely, and also went back in for their animals as they had requested for him to do, which he didn't have to do, and got out just as the back end of the house started to catch fire. So with that being said, we would like to present Officer Rafael Marine with a certificate of commendation for immediate life-saving efforts steering a house fire which he saved the life of both residents on September 28, 2018.
And before we do the next presentation, Chief Thule has something he'd like to say.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I just want to thank him as well. You know, while we're responding, a lot of times they're on duty, they get to the scene first, and it just shows the coordination we have between the fire department and police department. We rely on them when we get there, and hopefully they rely on us when we get there. So I just wanted to thank him personally as fire chief for definitely getting those people out of the house at that time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Commissioner Clark, you have a lovely face, a look on your face.
I know.
And what does that mean?
It's just, you know, I got to say something as a Commissioner. I'm so honored to have somebody like you on our police force.
Here, here, welcome. Moving along with the festivities, presentation promotion ceremony for Sergeant for Officer
For a long time, I was the only supervisor, or should I say sergeant, at the department, and then I was promoted to lieutenant, and so I was kind of doing both jobs. So I was very excited when we started the hiring, the interviewing process for a new sergeant, to take my old position over and to have new leadership in our department as well. We had the interviews probably a couple of weeks ago, and so he's kind of already been in the position, but we always have an official ceremony, it's very special, it's an honor. And I would like to introduce you to our newly promoted Sergeant Donald Venable for the TRC Police Department. And we have his father that is here to pin on his new badge for him. Sergeant Venable's father is also in law enforcement as well, so this is a special I'd like to also recognize his mother, his sister, and his spouse that is here in the audience, they're all wearing blue, if you can't see them, here to support him as well.
We buy very tough shirts. They're good material.
Cut badges.
Commissioners, Sergeant Donald Venable.
And I'd like to extend the courtesy of any of the members of the family, maybe the proud dad, if you'd like to say a few words, please feel free, Sergeant. Don't want to put you on the spot, but, and we're going to waive the three-minute public comment, okay?
Well, I do have ties to Truth or Consequences. I worked for, I was at the Sheriff's Department with Sheriff Charlie Cox, and I stayed with the Sheriff's Department, loved working up here. I had to do the Hillsborough Run once a week, but it was nice to be up here, got to know a lot of people, and enjoyed it up here, but when Charlie ran out of time as sheriff, I went to work for, I ended up at the Don Yana County Sheriff's Department, where I retired as a senior lieutenant. And apparently my son paid attention to what I was doing, because he is, and I'm so proud of him. It's a tough business, and the number of officers that are killed today is just out of hand. He's elected, he wants him to do that, and he's chosen to do that, so I'm proud of him. As far as me, because of the retirement, New Mexico retirement laws, after that, I really can't do too much active, but I still work on four homicide cases for the Sheriff's Department, cold case homicides, and hopefully I get to go back there and go back to regular full-time doing the cold case homicides. But I like your city up here, I love to come up here and visit. It's a great day today.
Please, you're always welcome. I think you might even have family around here, so come back and visit family. Thank you very much for your kind words, appreciate it. Okay, the next item, we're going to go into presentations. The first one is for a special use permit for Verizon, and our presenter is Ms. Amy McKenzie.
Good morning, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, nice to see you again. Again, my name is Amy McKenzie, I am representing Verizon Wireless, and we've got a slideshow coming up. There we go. I'll go ahead and have you go to the next slide. Okay, these are hard, these are hard to read from the back of the house, but Verizon has proposed a co-location on TRC's water tank. We came in February to discuss this, and this is my, well, this was my hope to be going through the approval process today, but the reason that we're here is both for a coverage and a capacity need in the City of Truth or Consequences. You can see that the, oh, that's okay, go ahead, go ahead and keep going. We'll stop right there, perfect. Okay, so again, the reason that Verizon is here requesting a co-location on the water tank is that there is a coverage and capacity need in the city. And the reason is, is that we only have one highway site that is covering TRC, and that's inadequate for what the needs are in TRC. You have citizens, you have visitors, you have businesses that depend on state-of-the-art services, and we need to get up to that speed. And in order to do that, we need to have a site in TRC, not on the highway covering, but in TRC, and that's what the proposal is about. As everybody knows, you can turn on your phone, it works fine, but the problem is, is that the more people that you have, essentially like on the highway, the crowded, the more crowded it gets, the lack of quality service, it starts deteriorating, deteriorating, excuse me, once you have more people on it. Okay, I'll go ahead and have you go ahead. Again, these are a little hard to see from such a distance, I apologize, but red is actually a good thing for us, we want more red, because that is excellent indoor and outdoor coverage. Blue, the lighter blue, is excellent outdoor and in-vehicle, and then dark blue is excellent in-vehicle, not outdoor, sorry, not indoor, and then yellow is partial to no coverage, and white is no coverage. And so the little X that's there, or sorry, the little square, is the area that we're trying to cover, which is smack dab right where we're at. You can go ahead and go to the next slide, please. So this is what it looks like without the coverage. So this is what it looks like without the coverage. And then if you go to the next one, it'll show it what it looks like with the coverage. I know it doesn't look like much to the layperson's eyes, but it will give improved indoor, outdoor, and vehicle coverage. So this is my, yeah, all right. So again, the demand for better service is here. It's now, and we're trying to keep ahead of the game. The demand for data services, because nowadays, a phone is no longer a phone. Frankly, a phone is a computer. We're carrying around computers in our pockets. We need not just voice service, but we need data service. And the demand has grown 650% between 2013 and 2018. 650%, it's crazy. Everybody uses their phone. My son uses it at UNM to issue his reports. You use it to look up your GPS to figure out how you're gonna get to the lake. You use it for everything. You're downloading videos, you're uploading pictures. The demand is there, and again, we are trying to meet that here in TRC. Seventy-six percent of 911 calls originate from a cellphone now. I would say, I think it was 75% of millennials or the younger generation have never even owned a landline phone. They only have a cellphone. And as you know now, when you move, you don't even have to change your phone number anymore. You can carry your phone numbers wherever you go across the country. So this is, this is a necessity for the average American. Fifty-two percent of the households, again, are with only wireless, and more than 75% of prospective homebuyers prefer strong wireless signals. Go ahead. And so this is the path to me being here. We started originally with a company called Skyway Towers. They were proposing to the city a new 80-foot monopole. The city did not appreciate that. It did not really want an 80-foot monopole. So after looking at that, we said, that's fine, and we started pursuing an alternate proposal, which is the water tank. And back in November, we started talking to Robbie Travis and Susanna Diller, and now we're talking with Tracy, about that proposal. I came and gave the proposal in February of 2018 to the commission, and was given the green light to go ahead and start working on that proposal. And that's what we've been doing ever since. Thanks. In May, we submitted the business terms to Susanna and to the city. We were looking at an initial five-year term with four or five-year options, so that would be a 25-year lease. In July, Susanna advised us that we needed to, you know, kind of cart before the horse. We needed to get through this committee's approval first before we could finalize negotiations with the lease, which is perfectly understandable. And then October 2nd, we submitted our SUP application. So this is what it's gonna look like. So this is a view of the south elevation. Verizon is proposing to have only six antennas on the water tank. So this is, and they will be flush-mounted, essentially at the band of the water tank. If you look at the mural, it's got the top decorative band. Essentially, that's where we'd be at. The water tank is roughly 62 feet, and I believe our center line is 45. And the reason, and that's a compromise even for us, we'd like to go a little bit higher. But the way the water tank is shaped, as soon as it starts curving, you can't be flush-mounted. You have to have, you know, it's not kind of a vertical position on the tank. You can't put a, if it's curved, you can't, then it starts looking like a dog ear. We don't want to have, we were given the direction, don't put anything above the water tank that looks like an appendage. And we were also given the direction to blend into the water tank, which we took that direction. We're going to paint the match, we're gonna flush-mount them, we're gonna make them as small as possible. We reduced the number of antennas. So again, visually, it's not gonna be very impactful. So again, this is the view from the south. Sorry, without. And then if you go to the next one, it's a view with, oh, sorry, that's the next one. You go to the next one, please. You can see that.
That was the first one, that's the second one.
Yeah, the second one, if you can zoom in a little bit on the tank, you'll see where the, where the. It's kind of proven my point that we're hiding them really well. There's three sectors on it, so there'll be three spots on the water tank that will have two antennas each. So it's not all six together. So there's three sectors, three positions, and they'll have each, have two antennas each. And on the ground, you can, if you wouldn't mind just going to, all the way to the site plan, which is the first drawing. Perfect. So the round is the water tank, and the square to the south is the equipment compound. We cited this with the city. We went out and walked this with the city and asked for their preference. Again, we selected this site because it is the least visibly noticeable from any passerby. We're going to have a 15 by 15-foot leased area with a 6-foot fence. And when we spoke with Susanna, we said that if necessary, we'd be happy to also add to the bong that goes around on the east side of the tank, if that would even further mitigate any kind of siding from the street. If you go to the next page, please, this is the elevation drawing from the south. And that shows on the right hand, left is before, right is after. You can see two of the sectors on the left and the right of the tank. And again, as you can see, we are center line as best as we can to the top before it starts looking like dog ears. And then at the bottom, you can see where the equipment compound is going to be. And again, we decided to go on that side of the tank because that has the most stuff on it already, so it's not gonna look any much different if we have some cabling over there as well. All right. Terrific. So Verizon's application does meet the code and legal requirements for TRC for citing this. The city staff, who we've worked with for over a year, recommends approval of our application. We have explored all the options to fill this capacity and coverage matter, and frankly, the only option, and the best option, both for Verizon and frankly for the city, is to co-locate on an existing water tower. This will provide the coverage that the city is demanding, and it will also blend into the existing architecture and not add any verticality to the city. We recognize that it is historic landmark for TRC, and that's why we've worked really hard with the city to figure out an appropriate and best design. And then, well, we're not doing it today, but I definitely do request that we, our application be heard and approved. I honestly think that this is a good application. We've been first in line for quite a bit trying to get this done, and I'd really like to get this done on behalf of Verizon. And I stand for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the Commission? Commissioner Clark?
I do remember conversing with you a lot.
Yes, ma'am.
And when you came up with, we'll put a big tower there, and then we'll make it look like a tree. I remember that conversation. And then the next time you came in, you had come up with the design of putting, you know, the, that kind of remind me of like scuba diving tanks, you know, on the water tank hill. That would be so, you know, for, from our standpoint, or my standpoint, far less visible and intrusive. And that was the big thing that a lot of people were saying, that I heard, is they just didn't want another huge tower.
Right.
And I do remember hearing our 911 people and our emergency services people concerned that another tower up there might interfere with their broadcast, and that's obviously what's so important to us. But I also remember saying to you that because you were the first one in, and we know that we were looking for another carrier too, because we have one carrier that we can't get service on, but that you would definitely have basically first ride or refusal. And I do remember that conversation. I'm just rereading the minutes here, and I'm correct.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate that.
So that being said, I still want to entertain another carrier or two, but I really appreciate the fact that you have tried to make it as invisible as possible, because that is really important to our people here, and that is a, you know, a great big spot. So I just want to say thank you. It's nice to see you again.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate that. And we're not anti-anybody else going on your water tank. Please understand that. We just, we just would like to go on the spot that we selected, because it's real estate, you know, and location, location, location still works for RF as well. So in order to make the application work for Verizon, we need to be at that center line. We need that particular ground space.
Amy, can you do one more thing for me, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Is talk to me about the difference between 4G, which is what the proposal is, and going to 5G, because I've had some questions from some of our citizens about putting 5G out there.
Yes. Well, 5G is the next generation. I'm not sure when that will come to truth or consequences, to be perfectly honest. Verizon is now just working in New Mexico. There was legislation just passed in September regarding 5G, and we're just starting to work that in Albuquerque and Santa Fe, and I believe Las Cruces, you know, the big three. So that'll give us some lessons learned on 5G. I don't know how the application would work necessarily here. I'm pretty sure it would just be an antenna modification. But 5G is closer sites, so there may be additional sites required in truth or consequences. But I'm really speaking on a way beyond my level.
Okay, but that would come to the Commission first before it would be upgraded from four to five?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. Any further questions?
I just have one, Ms. McKenzie.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you?
We do have members of the public that want to speak, if they can do that.
I don't, not, not, we're gonna do a public hearing on this now, because that's when we're, we're not here to the public.
And I think, Mr. Mayor, after we hear from both presenters, I'll make a few comments regarding about the scheduling, the specialty permit hearings, and some procedural guidelines I'm gonna be suggesting to you.
Okay.
So we'll talk throughout, very busy, Mr. Grant, as to that.
So I just need a follow-up to Commissioner Clark's questions. I just need a definition of co-location.
Sure.
What does that mean?
No, that's a very appropriate question. So co-location is if you have a structure, and I hate to say a tower, because tower is limiting. A tower can be a monopole, it could be a self-support tower, or it could be a water tank, or a rooftop. And in this, in this case, it being a water tank, we would co-locate on the water tank. And by co-locate, I mean, the primary use for a water tank is a water tank. I understand yours is non-functioning, but the primary reason for that water tank is as a water tank. To co-locate somebody is just to add another user on that structure. So if you were going on a monopole, a monopole serves no purpose other than being a pole. As soon as you add or co-locate different providers on it, then it becomes a wireless facility. A rooftop, same thing. A roof is, you know, to keep the rain off of the house, but you can add antennas onto a roof and have it serve as a wireless facility. So in this case, co-locating, if you co-located Verizon, you would have one co-locator. If you co-located somebody else, you would have a second or a third co-locator.
So would Verizon entertain the idea of putting other providers on their antenna?
No.
Or their structural?
Well, your structure, you of course have the ability, since you own the structure, you can entertain another provider coming along and co-locating on the tank. Again, where I was saying about the location, 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 is we need that center line, and we need that separation between, you have to have a separation between one provider and the other provider so that there's no interference. So if Company B came along, they would not be at the same center line as Verizon. That would be interference. So you would have to either be below them or above them. And that's the provider's responsibility to work out any of those interfering, interference issues.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? All right, Jay Levy here. Let's have Gravity Pad do their presentation, and I appreciate if you could jump in.
I will.
Thank you very much.
And unless the world stops turning, your public hearing, Ms. McKenzie, will be on November 14th, here in these facilities. All right, this is Gravity Pad, and our presenter is Sean Milks.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners. The proposal that we have here, we're not gonna be discussing, as per your request, business terms, so we really won't go into the teeth of it. This will just be a quick proposal and how it relates to Verizon. A bit of history, Gravity Pad, I am one of the owners, there's two. We're from Albuquerque, New Mexico. We started the company in 2005, and we have contracts with AT&amp;T, Verizon, Sprint, Cellular One, Cricket, T-Mobile, basically all of the FCC wireless carriers. Gravity Pad owns over 25 sites throughout the state of New Mexico. Typically, the business model is, we build a site for all of the carriers. And in many instances, all over the state, we have built a site. As I stated previous, we have contracts with all the carriers, and we provide the site to accommodate all of them for power, a lot of cases for fiber. Where this specific location, of course, the water tank, we do believe that putting up a new tower would not benefit the City of TRC. We agree that utilizing the existing verticality, which is the water tank, is preferred. Where Gravity Pad comes in is, we would assist the city and manage the water tank on behalf of the city. We won't get into the business terms of that, but the city would be receiving revenue upfront, including revenue of each wireless carrier. The intent is to not have any administrative cost for the city. Because we've been doing this over 20 years, we have extensive knowledge on other water tank facilities that we've done in the past, specifically in the village of Tejeras, multiple sites in Rio Rancho in Albuquerque, and in around the state. The intent is to get all of the carriers on the water tank so that it's providing service for TRC. Many of you might have Verizon, many of you might have AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, Sprint, whatnot. The goal is, is to make it as easy as possible and ensure that each carrier is able to fit on the tank itself. Discussing that only one carrier can only be at the same rad center, that's not true. We have horizontal separation, and what we would do is be managing the water tank so that Verizon can go where they need to be. They have first ride or refusal, we will work with them, that's not an issue. Currently, we have a contract with AT&amp;T. They also want to go on the water tank. We would were in different locations on the tank, still providing the much-needed coverage in the area. AT&amp;T also only has one site on the highway, it's on the same tower as Verizon's, so there is a definite need for the tank. There is more to just co-location and putting on a tank and making sure the antennas are painted to match. We want to keep the aesthetics of the water tank, and having a management agreement in place ensures that the local guys are here. As I stated, we are from Albuquerque, graduated from New Mexico State, so I grew up here, as did my business partner, so we're very familiar with the area. There is possible environmental, SHPO, NEPA, Phase Ones, all of these things have to be done through the state and federal level, FCC, FAA, compliance, all these things we would take care of and make sure that the other carriers did so as well. And as I stated before, the idea is to have all of the carriers here, both providing revenue for the city on a monthly basis, as well as coverage of the area. We have contracts with them, we work with them, and we make it as easy as possible for them and for you, so that the end result is all of the carriers on the one site, all with painted-to-match antennas, all working with each other, making sure that there's separation, so that there's no interference, there's no interference with, actually it's here, the site and the existing 911 facility. So, we would be managing and taking care to ensure that everything works in conjunction with one another. And I'm open for any questions that you may have.
Thank you Mr. Milks, questions, concerns? Commissioner Clark, you should just keep your hands up all the time. It's gonna be the energy of going up and down and up and down.
That was good exercise.
It gets tiring holding it up.
I'm having a little bit of a hot problem here that, you know, we just heard from Amy and she's talking Verizon, and now we're hearing from you, and you're saying Verizon, AT&amp;T, Sprint, T-Mobile, those things, so are we listening to two different options for the same thing on the same tank? Is that, I'm getting a nod from Amy. Because one of the things I remember talking about was that the desperate need that we need to be able to have AT&amp;T in our community, and so it's nice to hear that, and at the same time, we, you're the first person that's walked in the door that said I can bring AT&amp;T into the building, and then what happens to the other outfit that has come and made a presentation to us to put Verizon on that tower?
She builds it exactly like she intends.
So, she could still be on the tower?
She could still be at the tower, she was here, Verizon was here first.
She was here first.
We will honor that, and we will work with them to keep the site and their location of their azimuths. The azimuth is essentially the exact location of where their antennas go, okay? What, we're not trying to step on anyone's toes, we want everyone to be here, we're just simply going to manage the situation so that, and can you put this up on the screen? This is AT&amp;T's drawings, and we will ensure that when AT&amp;T goes, they will not be interfering with Verizon, because if Verizon's being interfered with, AT&amp;T's being interfered with. But each FCC wireless carrier has their own frequencies, these frequencies are completely different. Verizon's at 900 megahertz, AT&amp;T's at 1900, and so although there has to be separation, it doesn't have to be vertical, it can be horizontal.
I don't have that, sorry.
Okay.
Actually, everybody has a hard copy of that.
So, I'd like to follow up, Mr. Milks, on Commissioner Clark, will you finish?
Yeah, my hand's down.
I want a clarification, so I make sure I totally, 101% understand. I understood Commissioner Clark's question, I want to make sure I understood your answer.
Yes.
And please correct me if I'm wrong, what I heard was, you would be perfectly happy if we negotiated something with Verizon, they were up here first and they've done their due diligence for almost a year now, they would pick out the spot on the tower that works for them, and you have no problem with that, that whatever else was available, you feel confident that you could make that area work for AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, and any other companies that you have under contract, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so, you talked about antennas, is that the same antenna that Ms. McKenzie was talking about?
Yes.
Or are your antennas higher, going upwards past the dome of the water tank?
No, our antennas would be at the same rad center, 45 feet, looking basically, that's a bad example, but it would not go over the threshold of the tank.
Okay.
It would essentially be the same.
Okay.
Our antennas, when I say ours, AT&amp;T's antennas, T-Mobile, Sprint, Verizon's, they use flat panel antennas, some are eight feet long, some are six feet long, some are wide, some are narrow, but they all are basically do the same thing, and they will all be at the same rad center, so to speak, on the water tank, just at different azimuths. So, Verizon might be at 0, 120, 240, we would put AT&amp;T at 30, 150, you know, 270, we would put T-Mobile at a different azimuth, so they just rounded the tank and provided the coverage for the area.
And could you guarantee Verizon, and we're just talking now?
Sure.
Since they were here first, could you guarantee Verizon that whatever you were able to bring in as your customers on the other area of the tank that you would decide would serve your customer as well, could you guarantee Verizon that there would be no interference for what you were doing to what they had done?
Yes, because if T-Mobile or AT&amp;T is looking at the tank and they're putting up their antennas, if they're interfering with Verizon, they're in turn interfering with themselves. So, there would need to be definite separation. We have multiple water tanks throughout the state, throughout the country, throughout the world, that have multiple carriers on it, right now, at the same radio center. So, they, there's just a separation, but that's a pretty big water tank, and there's a lot of room on it. As long as Verizon didn't say, well, we want to go at this location and we want 10 feet on either side, that's where our management comes in, because we know that they don't need that. We know that the separation doesn't have to be that far away. We also know that, you know, the radio frequency engineers for each specific company knows within a propagation study on how far it's shooting out, so that it does not interfere with each other. They always play nice in the sandbox, and you just gotta build the sandbox and make sure that everyone is doing what they're supposed to.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Commissioner Hesler?
How many antennas are we talking about here, totally?
I heard Verizon say they have six, AT&amp;T will also have six, I could tell you, T-Mobile will probably have six, and Sprint typically uses three, one per sector. Now, here ends the management proposal from Gravity Pad is, as we move into 5G, as things happen, antennas have to be changed out. So, you have to ensure that everyone is doing what they're supposed to per the lease agreement, making sure it's painted to match, making sure that they're sharing the fiber, if it's available, the power, the ground equipment, everything. There's gonna be, you know, maintenance with trash and graffiti and, you know, weeds and stuff like that. We are proposing we take care of all of this, so that it is, nothing is on the city. If an issue arises, you call me, and I come down here, and we handle the situation, because we know and have done it many, many times.
So, aesthetically talking, can we insist that the antennas all look relatively the same, that they're the same size, and that they have, they'll do the same thing, obviously?
Within reason, but some antennas are eight feet long, some are six feet long, some are wide, some are narrow. What we will ensure is that they're painted to match, and it's not just a tan paint, by the way. We're gonna have to get an artist that we've used in the past, to ensure that those are painted to match the tank, because if you look out there, there's design on it, and we need to make those antennas flush-mounted, making sure that they don't weld it onto it, that it's an epoxy, there's many, many other items that go into ensuring that it's safe, that it's not gonna ruin the tank, that 20 years from now when they pull them off and do something else, that it's not gonna ruin it. And there's also, has to be, you know, some sort of repercussions in the lease, that when they do leave, they have to put it back the way they came. And so, these are the type of things that, you know, we, you know, will assist with, and we do all the time.
So, everything will match, including mounting brackets?
Yes. Well, the mounting bracket will be behind the antenna, more than likely, if it is skewed and it can be viewed, we will make sure it's painted to match, yeah.
Any further questions? I think it might, just for me personally, I'm kind of like, I'm not from Missouri, but I am.
Yes.
Show me. If you have these contracts that you represent, AT&amp;T and all these other companies, if you could bring them with you?
Sure.
And we're gonna have your public hearing on December 12th?
Okay.
At 9:00 AM in these chambers. I just want to make sure that, I'm quite sure what you say is true, I'm not questioning that, but I would feel more comfortable during deliberation to know that the contracts are real, and not that you have just reached out to these companies and they have said, yeah, if you find us something, we'll come aboard.
Sure.
I'd like to see that you actually can officially speak for them.
Right now, I can officially speak for AT&amp;T, and that's all I am working on currently, but we have contracts with the other companies. If the management agreement was approved, then of course, we would go to the other carriers and say, okay, here's another one to add in the mix, how's your coverage look here, and look at it from that standpoint. But I can most definitely bring you, you know, redacted, business term redacted, contracts of all the carriers, not a problem.
Understood, all right, thank you. Okay, any further questions from the Commission? Jerry Nun, thank you very much for your presentation. Attorney Rubin?
Yes, I'm glad Mr. Milks and Ms. McKenzie are here. You know, just backing up to when we were approving the agenda, and this goes back to the thing I had with the mayor a couple of days ago when we were discussing the agenda. I think the assumption was, was that Verizon and Gravity Pad were competitors, that the position the city was in is that we had to pick maybe one proposal and that would force you to pick the, considering the other proposal. So, that was part of the reason why we decided to have this spread out, the specialty permit hearings kind of spread out, so you wouldn't have like an uncomfortable situation where you're giving specialty permit presentations the same day, and you're cross-examining each other the same day, and that, so I was kind of like, you know, involved in giving that advice, but now listening to Mr. Milks, you seem to be saying that the two of you are not necessarily competing. I don't really know where we are, because I know, Commissioner Clark, you asked, and the mayor asked. Ms. McKenzie, can you tell me?
My competition is with AT&amp;T, it's not necessarily with Gravity. They're essentially like a property manager for a house, they're gonna manage a property I need to, AT&amp;T is the purpose. You can't leave it to T and T, you know, I mean, that's just kind of an analogy.
I'd like to leave it, Attorney Rubin, the way we have set this up. I think the public has a right to, since this has been a concern of some of the public, they have heard the presentations, now it will be advertised that we'll have public hearings, where the public will have the opportunity to chime in.
Well, and let me address that also, a couple of points I want to continue to discuss. It was separate today, and we had advertising this session, but I believe that if we made the announcement right now as to when these specialty permit hearings will be held, I think that would be sufficient for us giving public notice. So, Ms. McKenzie, we talked about Verizon giving their presentation for the specialty permit November 14th, is that satisfactory to you?
Yes.
And Mr. Milks, December 12th for your company, is that satisfactory?
Yes.
Okay, was there anybody here today that was planning on speaking today regarding, you know, giving testimony on this?
Ms. Britton, did you want to?
Well, I guess the question I'm asking is, I know you're planning on speaking today, would you be available to come on those dates that we've selected, or have you ever come back?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
I'm not sure. I'm holding up this whole process.
Can I say something? Attorney Rubin, I had a neighbor come over and talk to me, because I live close to the water tank, but not close enough to be noticed up. And what this person understood is that it was gonna be a tower, not the part that's connected to the water tank itself, and I don't know, Ms. Britton, I really can't talk to you without the mayor, but my concern is this, it almost sounds like we need to have these two sit down around people, and because Ms. McKenzie was here first, making a proposal to us, and I'm thrilled to death to hear that we could possibly have AT&amp;T, that's been my beef, and Ms. McKenzie heard that. But it seems to me that there was some information that went out incorrectly, because my neighbor understood it was gonna be a big tower, as opposed to what we're talking about, and I even downloaded the picture of Ms. McKenzie that she had provided to us in February. So, is it possible to actually have the two of you sit down with city manager, or the lawyer, or the mayor, or something like that? I'm just throwing this out, but it seems, you know, it's not really clear how this can work together, and it's uncomfortable to have them going separately, because if we're making a decision, we don't know, can you work together, how well can you work together, is it possible to do that? That's where I'm having a little difficulty in understanding right at the moment. Am I the only one that?
Ms. McKenzie, are you comfortable answering that question, or do you just like to let it sit where we are right now?
You're on the spot.
Oh, well, why don't we, maybe we'll just keep the sketch that we've already outlined, and certainly that doesn't preclude the two of us from referring in the meantime, so that's.
In the meantime?
Use the first comments.
I'd like to extend the courtesy to Ms. Britton, and if my fellow Commissioners would allow me to go back to public comment?
Yes.
I'm good.
Since you've heard both presentations, Ms. Britton, if you'd like, the microphone for three minutes for public comment?
That's good.
About what your concerns are, or what you've heard, or your support, or whatever. Don't want to put you on the spot, Ron, but we want to give you the opportunity.
Well, my little speech is changed.
When we talked earlier, I promised you five minutes.
Okay, go ahead, absolutely, without a question.
Oh, well, thank you.
If you speak for five, that's fine, if you speak for three, that's even better.
Exactly, we'll get that. Well, thanks, my little... My little speech has been completely changed because my understanding was that there was going to be a tall antenna up there. It's going to have, it's going to require a red flashing light, and that would just destroy the night sky for the downtown historic district. You know, you just don't need a big blinking light all night telling you that, yes, it's possible to dial 911. I just, I just thought that would be completely inappropriate, detrimental to the downtown historic district, which everybody has spent so much time in establishing, delineating the historic district, peppering it with historic building designations, and trying to protect something that's very fragile, our tranquility. So this was my big concern, was that this tranquility is getting nipped away between military flyovers, the off-highway vehicles, the mine, which is also having their hearings today, a hospital helicopter, and things like that. It's like, oh, this is okay, oh, that's okay, the other thing is okay. But there are toxic effect that's going to affect the downtown tranquility and the healing that happens down there. So this was my concern, and I'm wondering about the need now that the antennas have changed remarkably since my last experience with this discussion. And it sounds like they don't require, right now, a red flashing light. But what about 6G, 7G, 8G? They're going to require, oh, we're going to propose a higher antenna, you know, but we're established there, so we're already in, so you may as well get us this extra 20 feet of antenna with red flashing light, you know what? I just don't want that to happen to the town. Okay, shut up. Okay, well, thank you guys so much. I really appreciate your monumental effort that you all make here and the time that you all spend in protecting the citizens of the town. I really appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Before you leave, could I get you to identify yourself, just for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. My name is Rhonda Britton. I own Black Cat Books &amp; Coffee, which is kind of right under the tower there. And B-R-I-T-T-A-N. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I have.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I might add, as I have forward to cheesy commission, I do have two other comments.
Go ahead.
And so if you want me to read them, I could, or I can just notify them of the change of date for the public hearing, so they might be able to attend now.
Sure, I think that might be better. Thank you. So I'm going to ask this question of either of you. I don't, I'm not a technology person whatsoever, don't even have a cellphone, a computer or a television in our house. So my question is this, I'm hearing these 4Gs and 5Gs and whatever it is, does as technology gets better and faster, is that a direct correlation of the height of the antenna? Or can you keep that antenna, to Ms. Britton's point, to keep the antennas, what we're talking about below the top of the water tank and just change something on it or change that structure itself, but you don't have to go higher? Is that correct?
No, no. Normally, when technology changes, the antenna changes, but the antenna doesn't grow.
Okay.
I mean, at least antennas, I can't imagine them growing. They've always been eight-foot or six-foot or four-foot antennas. It's just the power or the amplification or, you know, the technology of the antenna. Maybe they get a little wider, but, you know, but they don't, they won't grow above the tank. The engineers will work with what they already have. So if they are at 45 feet, that's what their starting planning is. And so when the technology changes, they will be working with that parameter. When a flashing red light is usually introduced on a tank or on a tower, that is indicative of the FAA, that's a height requirement by the FAA. And again, that's part of the reason why we are not going above the water tank is because we don't want to increase the height of the tower. If you increase the height of a tower, there's a possibility that there may be lighting requirements. For your tank, there is no lighting requirements. For our application, there would be no lighting requirements. I'm sure for my competitors, there would be no lighting requirements. And again, with the technology changes, and I've been doing this since the 80s, I haven't seen any kind of an application that has, you've had to take a 45 center line and go up to a, you know, 60-foot center line.
Okay, that's good information to know also as we move forward.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next.
Let me also elaborate a little bit. Sorry, that way for Ms. Mills, or, excuse me, Mr. Mills and Ms. McKenzie's information for the hearings we're going to have. So what I'll be recommending to the commission is we follow what's called a batter shell procedure. And what that will do, for example, since Verizon is going to go first on November 14th, Ms. McKenzie, you'll have the opportunity to testify, and you can certainly adopt your comments of today as my reference at the November 14th hearing. That way I don't repeat everything, you know, we need to say. You can sort of supplement your comments if you wish to. The commission will then have the right to ask additional questions. The public will be allowed to give their testimony, and we've heard one comment right today. And then any opponents can also cross-examine you. And then, Mr. Mills, the same thing goes for you when you have, when it's your turn on December 12th. So that's called a batter shell procedure.
Okay. Good, thank you for that. So, all right, we move forward. Thank you very much, both. Appreciate it. The next item is H3, which is discussion, action, resolution.
No, we need to go to F. We need to do F.
Oh, I think you probably jumped over the consent calendar. Sorry about that. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve the consent calendar, which consists of F1, Public Utility Advisory Board Minutes for August 20th, 2018, and F2, approval of agreement between the Village of Williamsburg and the City of Truth or Consequences for wastewater treatment.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Whitehead, a second by.
Second.
Commissioner Clark, any further discussion? Jerry Nun, all of whom favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, thank you, Carrie Zanussi, and thank you for keeping. The next item is H3, Resolution Number 1718-19, authorizing and approving, approval submission of a completed application for financial assistance and project approval to the New Mexico Finance Authority for the Colonius Infrastructure Fund for a complete TUC Municipal Water System Improvements Plan. Tracy Burnett, our Grand Projects Coordinator, is our presenter.
Good morning, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Commissioners, Manager Kenton. So this resolution will authorize the application to the New Mexico Finance Authority for a colonius infrastructure, requesting assistance for us to go forward with a complete total water system planning document. We're actually going to be changing the wording to that as a preliminary engineering report. It has been suggested that that's better wording for financial assistance. By doing a complete water application planning document, we will be in better position to request funding from not only future colonias for water infrastructure projects, but actually any of the funding sources. So it'll encompass our entire water distribution system. Right now, our current PER is specific only to the downtown water lines. So I'm requesting approval of the resolution for a complete TUC Municipal Water System Improvements Plan. We will be requesting approximately 100,000. We have had quotes from different engineers that I kind of reached out to that say we'd be looking at anywhere between 80 to 100,000 for a complete plan. So, and colonius infrastructure is a loan portion of 10% and a cash match of 10%. So if we apply for and receive the $100,000, we would be looking at a 10,000, 10,000 match loan component. Can I stand for any questions?
Thank you. Questions? Mr. Clark, where's the 20,000 coming? Is that your question to me, Mr. Clark?
No, I'll get there second. Ms. Burnett, it seems to me that, it was four or five years ago, and I got my hands on a water study that had already been done for the entire city, and it was, help me with this, Mayor Protem, if you can remember, or Mayor, that we had a bid of like $20 million. And that's where, you know, I'm kind of keeping in the back of my brain, $20 million just to repair some of the water lines. Now, I know that you've given us an estimate just of a street that's almost, you know, three-quarters of a million dollars, so I'm sure that that needs to be updated. But are you aware of the study that I'm talking about? It's an old study.
Possibly the Water Asset Management Plan. That did, it was identifying like the critical and critical lines that needed to be replaced within infrastructure. I'd have to verify the totals within that plan, but it might have done an estimate. Whereas a preliminary engineering plan is more specific to including engineering fees, including environmental reports that may or may not be required, breaking projects up into smaller phases. It'll encompass maybe a whole project, but it'll break it down into specific phases.
So is this kind of like an update of something that we've already done before, but we never were able to act on?
It would be in conjunction with the asset management plan because it'll encompass all of the water distribution lines that are labeled in the asset managed plan. And then it'll, right now, our preliminary engineering report for the water distribution line talks specifically about the Cook Street Treatment Plant for our water treatment system, as well as specific lines downtown and the cost to replace those, including the environmental report. They've, the engineers have actually itemized costs within that. So what we don't have is something that stretches very well-itemized beyond our downtown area, and that's what I'm wanting. I'm wanting a report that's going to maybe break the city off into sections and itemize which ones are going to be required, maybe heavy or environmental, which ones will require complete replacement or, you know, larger distribution lines. It's just, a preliminary engineering report is going to be much more detailed, and that's what the funders are requesting.
Yeah, Commissioner Clark, I think that's the bottom line.
Is that we have to have another engineering report?
If we don't have, well, see, the other was not an engineering report.
It was just.
Correct me if I'm going out on thin ice here, Tracy. It was a, it was an overview report of your assets and lack of strength of those assets, meaning corroding pipes and stuff like that. But from what I've been given, understand, and this we were talking about in the agenda meeting, is we're not going to be able to even apply for money unless we have an engineering report. So the funders know that this is real, that somehow we got money, we spent it on an engineering report, and if we were granted money, we would be shovel-ready to phase in a project that would hopefully eventually clear up all our wills, ills. We might not be alive at the end of it, but.
So my concern is, like, we keep doing all these engineering reports, but then sometimes we can't find the money to follow up on it. So we've got all of these reports going into a desk and they're staying there, and, you know, it's a comment, it's not a criticism at all.
Right, right.
But that just, that's where I'm getting into the money problem.
So.
It's like taking $100,000 and putting it in a drawer.
Right.
And having it just stay there.
Now, in regards to the request where I came from, and you guys took a move forward on going with a water trust board application, we ended up dead in the water on that application and could not proceed because the funding that I was requesting for the streets and I'm trying to remember exactly what I applied for, but we didn't have a preliminary engineering report. We can have a design analysis report, kind of a guess from an engineering company. We can have our asset management plan that says, yes, the city owns this asset, this is what it cost in the beginning, this is the depreciation value, but without, the funding sources are requiring preliminary engineering reports. They want it broke down from an engineer's standpoint. It gives you an exact dollar amount to tailoring for the funding. Obviously, you have to look at the possibility that if you sit for too long on that planning document, you know, you have your costs and inflations that might go up, but a lot of times that's already written in, in a contingency section of whatever phase or the overall project. So you're right, it's hard to go out there and spend money for a planning document, but without that planning document, I can't apply for any infrastructure improvements within our water.
She's good. She did her homework.
That's why she's on staff. She's good.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, if I might interrupt, I have a couple to add. You know, Tracy and I discussed this when she brought it to my attention, and I totally understand your concerns as well, but right now, we have her, she's actively got quite a few, and this is pulled her back, in a sense.
We don't have a water.
Because we would have to go through and get that report. So that's why we thought this would be the best way to proceed, where we could get it for the whole city, and that portion would be done should that capability for funding come through. And then she'd have that portion of her job done and not have to wait for it.
Colonius is, right now, one of the only funding sources that is funding for some planning documents. There is the NMFA Planning Grant, right now, they have no funds available. I did reach out to Colonius to find out if they would be funding planning documents for this next cycle, and Angela Quintana did say, yes, there will be available funds. And as you guys know, by us being a colonia, we, it's a more limited funding. We aren't competing with some of the other places, you know, so maybe a better chance. We still have the issue of, one of the things they're going to ask is what our water rates are, and so we might not look the best in their eyes because our water rates are low. But unfortunately, right now, we're also working with USDA, and so we can't really move forward too quickly on our water rates until we move in with USDA, and then they'll implement that water rate study to see if that increases. So we're kind of at the lower totem pole on the Colonius application, but Colonius is geared towards a smaller group of people, so.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Burnett.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question. Tracy, once we do an engineering report of this sort, how, what is the timeframe before we have to update it, or how long can we use it for applying for money of our needs?
So anytime I am looking at a project, the engineer that we would have for our water system would look over that PER, and they would ascertain if there has been any high inflation costs. And it should be written, they kind of plan for that in the PER under their contingency area. So without knowing how quick inflation goes up or what requirements, like one of the concerns we had, and one of the reasons that we did have to change a little bit in our cost estimate for USDA water, was because USDA decided to kind of follow that suit of only going with products that were made in America or by America, and unfortunately, that is a cost increase because it's harder to get there, you know, those items. Our current water PER that we're using for the USDA is almost five years old, and I think the increase was, we added a little bit extra to it, but I want to say it was an increase within their original cost of approximately $500,000 to $700,000 from five years ago when they did that project.
Thank you.
And just since Tracy had mentioned that we kind of got knocked out of the box because of our low water rates, the state evidently, and I don't know why they do this, this is just information I've learned from, she's been teaching me from Tracy and from Manager Kenton, that our water rates on 6,000 gallons are $18.65. In the state, the lowest water rate for 6,000 gallons is $2.12. The most, and thank you for that, all that information, Tracy, and the most expensive is $124 for 6,000 gallons of water. We're at $18.65, and the state breaks. And the state breaks it down, is where are you are in relationship to the state average? The state average for 6,000 gallons is $33.65. We're 18.65. That's the average. A community that has the number of taps that we have, and it goes from 1 to 5,000, and that's where we definitely fall under, that's $34.12. So that is the average for communities that have the kind of the number of taps that we have. We're at 18.65. So what I heard when Tracy came back, uh, from Santa Fe, uh, is that they have the spreadsheet in front of them. They look at our water rates and they want to make sure that at least you can be a participant in this great adventure of replacing water pipes that you have skid in the game and that you have an investment, just the way they did with the wastewater. So we'll wait to hear.
I wish it was something as simple as I look at the spreadsheet. They look at you and they ask you to tell them what your water rate is. So it's verbalized with every community that gets up there. So by the time we get up there, sometimes we feel about this big. At least Arnie and I did last year. It was like, do you want to tell them? No, I don't want to tell them. You tell them.
But they know.
They, they don't want to invest in our infrastructure if we're not investing in our infrastructure.
But what, what I'm hearing is that is that we're kind of bound by the USDA right now. So we really can't raise our rates because of the USDA?
Well, we're at the tail end of an application, um, to submit the application. As soon as that application is submitted, uh, one of the next steps after their review is to have us working with RCAC, who's the one that did our wastewater rate survey.
Okay.
And so if we start...
So we might be looking at raising the rate.
Right. If we, if we do a rate increase, USDA may come in, you know, six months later to a U, a year later and say, you know what, you didn't increase it enough? You're going to need to increase it a little bit more. And I don't think the public would be, uh, it's going to be a hard sell on the public anyway, but if you increase and then six months later, you're bound by USDA to do yet another increase. I think it would be harder than just doing the one like we did, you know, wastewater. We did a 30%. It was a big jump, but then it was a small yearly after that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So any further questions? Hearing none, I will stand for a motion for approval. I will make that motion, uh, that we approve Resolution Number 1718/19 authorizing and approving submission of a completed application for financial assistance and project approval to the Mexico Finance Authority for the Colonia's Infrastructure Fund for a complete, um, what are you going to call it? Are you going to change it?
Preliminary engineering report.
Preliminary engineering report as it pertains to our water system.
Correct.
Improvement plan.
I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, can we have a roll call, please?
Honorable Steve Green.
Yes.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead.
Aye.
Honorable Ralph Heschler.
Yes.
Honorable Kathy Clark.
Aye.
Honorable Paul Buck.
Yes.
Carrie Jamison, thank you and good luck. Get us the money. Uh, H4, uh, Discussion Action, Resolution Number 1818/19, Budget Adjustment, our Finance Director, Ms. Melissa Torres.
Good morning, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Commissioners, uh, City Manager Kenton. The City of Truth or Consequences Finance is requesting the following budget adjustments. PD Confidential Fund 297, $4,360, increase to purchase radios for the PD. CDBG Fund 314, transfer out, $326,341.45. This is due to the manhole project being completed and we are putting the money back to the home source of it. Uh, water transfer in, $276,341.45. The increase in will take care of the originated of, for this manhole project where we have the start money. Water expense fund 504, $160,000. This will be for the rehab project for well eight. Uh, wastewater transfer in, fund 506, $50,000. Again, this is also originating the funds from the CDBG project. And I stand for any questions.
Thank you. Uh, any questions, concerns? Hearing none, I'll stand for a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 181819, Budget Adjustment, as presented by Melissa Torres, our Finance Director.
I have a motion by Mayor Protem Whitehead, seconded by Commissioner Baca. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clark, can we have a roll call, please?
Honorable Steve Green.
Yes.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead.
Aye.
Honorable Ralph Heschler.
Yes.
Honorable Kathy Clark.
Aye.
Honorable Paul Buck.
Yes.
Thank you, Carrie, unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the next item is I1, Identify and Approve Specific Streets for Improvements Using Allocated Funds. And again, our presenters, Tracy Burnett, Grant Projects Coordinator.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, Commissioners, Manager Kenton, um, as discussed in a previous meeting, we are back before you for the Sims and McAdoo Project minus the water lines. This would be for streets only, sorry. Um, excuse me. So the Streets Department has identified different section of the streets and the sidewalks along McAdoo, Sims, and Daniels, um, specifically between the Fork Street and Clancy Street areas that are in need of, uh, improvements. We received $100,000 for a capital appropriation, as well as a donation in the amount of $26,000 to put towards the McAdoo section, uh, between, well, right there in front of Sierra Grande Lodge. We have with you a list of the streets broken down within that project area, a cost for each one of the improvements on those streets. We've also included a section of Kruger, which is a section of roadway that was not completed in Streets Department's LGRF fund. And what I'm going to do now is I'm going to refer to Benny for descriptions of each of those streets and the work that they would be completed. And then we'll come back in and see which direction you want to move and which streets you'd be interested.
Mayor, Commissioners, as you know, you're all familiar with the McAdoo Project. And, uh, as you can see on the sheets there, we took off the concrete, curb and gutter and stuff because that's done already on those streets. So what I'm proposing is to come in and, and reclaim these streets and then put a two-inch overlay of asphalt on.
I like that. I like that verbiage, reclaim the streets. I like that.
And, and we added the, the price of the reclaimer on that first one there because that would probably be one of the streets we would do, being as we got, um, some help with, from the Sierra Grande Lodge for money on that.
Um, Benny, when you, uh, sorry to interrupt you, but you mentioned the Sierra Grande Lodge. Is it possible to do that without having too much, because that is a viable business and we don't want to hurt any of our businesses at all? Is it possible to do it in such a way that the, their customers still have access to the drive into their, their business where they could park their cars?
Yeah, that, that wouldn't be a problem. When you reclaim, we could run that reclaimer through there and have that road pecked in probably in one day.
Okay.
We, we can get them in and out. It shouldn't be a problem getting them in and out.
Okay, thank you.
On these streets, probably from Clancy all the way down to Foach would probably be a good one to do, because I ain't seen no water leaks on that street. So we could do those two blocks in them and it wouldn't be, shouldn't be a problem. Once again, it's going to be a pilot project because we're going to go in there and we probably wouldn't be going no more than 12 inches with that reclaimer. So we shouldn't run any water or anything like that. But like Ms. Clark said, who knows, we might find a car or... But yeah, we would go in there and reclaim. Those two would be good. The one I probably wouldn't recommend to do would be the one in front of the bank, in front of City Hall, because they've had problems with that sewer line right there. They keep digging it up. So we'd be wasting our money, I think, right there. Uh, we got the other little stretch done right there in front of City Hall, so we could do that, too. And we, we put that reclaimer in for a week because it's cheaper to run it by the week than by the day. And in a week, we could knock those streets out easy with that machine. It would just be a matter of reclaiming it and putting it back down a level and, and putting the asphalt in, which part two will do for us. The other street, if we have money left over, would be Kruger up there.
And this is basically the money that we've gotten from, um, from Rebecca Dow and the donation.
Yeah. And that, Commissioner Clark, that's, Commissioner Clark asked me, um, if that was some of the money that we got from the capital outlay from Representative Rebecca Dow and the generous donation from the Turner Foundation, uh, to help with repaving, uh, McAdoo in front of there. So, uh, uh, my question is, I ran all of the numbers in a perfect world if we had all this money. And I came up with, but your advice, Benny, is not to do on, in front of, in front of City Hall or...
Yeah, in front of City Hall.
That's, that's, okay, well, whatever. All right, so...
Steve, you're going to, um, excuse me, but you're going to run into the hot mineral water, um, discharge there, too.
Right.
And that's shallow. I don't think that's more than about maybe six inches, maybe 12 inches in different places on that street.
That was 70...
73, 79.
73,000. So basically, if we did everything excluding Kruger, my math is, and I'm just rounding the numbers out, to $160,000. If we added Kruger onto that, that is, what, in the 40s or 30s or something like that? Kruger was...
41, 575.
41. So we're looking at $200,000. So I guess my question, and I'm glad that, uh, Ms. Torres is here. Uh, so we got the 100 grand that we have to spend in 16 months. We have Mr. Turner's money, so that's 126. We also have in the Streets Department's budget, 1/8 of 1% for infrastructure for streets. So do we know if we just take a, a rough estimate, uh, so we're 200,000, that 1/8 of 1% is somewhere around $140,000, I'm thinking, uh, because a quarter is about 270. So 140, that's 340. And then I had heard, I don't have my, maybe Commissioner Clark can help me on this one. Uh, I thought that while working with Ms. Torres, put money in your budget, like $300,000.
Yeah, we got 295,000.
295. So may I ask, Benny, that 295, is that earmarked for any particular project, piece of equipment? Or is that kind of, that, that's something that the commission... No, that's not for payroll, that's for projects.
Yeah, that's for projects.
What, have you in your own mind allocated that 295 for projects that you want to do or feel the city needs to have done or a piece of equipment?
Yeah, I had, uh, figured we would use that on that McAdoo Project would be one of the ones that money was for.
Right, okay.
And, and then if there was any leftover, yeah, I would use some for equipment.
So you got 230 plus 41 for Kruger.
We got 435,000.
If you add the 126 onto the 295.
No, no, no. If you add the 295 plus the 1/8, 1/8 for infrastructure.
So when you do your...
Hold it, just one second. Uh, Ms. Torres, whoops, maybe I'm reading numbers wrong here. So please correct me before I go to the deep end.
Mayor, what it is, is it is projected for that 300,000 for streets. However, 100,000 is accounted for already for the capital appropriation. So all we really have is 100, 200,000 free that hasn't been identified for any specific street project. Now, when we received the 26,000 at the time, the budget was already finalized. So any addition that you can add is just the 26,000. So your total expense that we have to use on these projects are 326,000. 26,000 for the donation, 100,000 for the capital appropriation, and then again, 200,000 is free for how Mr. Fuentes wants to use it for any projects or equipment.
And, and, okay, give me one second, my mind's just running, yeah. Oh, the 1/8 of 1%, where is that? And is, is that in the operational part of Mr. Fuentes's budget or where is that money floating around?
So what they do is we have, uh, projected revenue and we have a projected expense. Um, based on our projected revenue, that's already calculated against his expense. His total expense for FY 1819 is 500 and, 500,000. Um, that's including the 300,000 already. So you have to remember when it comes to budgets, you have to look at budgets, um, in two ways. You have the cash in the bank and then you also have the budget on the piece of paper. Um, right now, Streets has 547,000 in the bank account. However, the total expenses for FY 1819 is 5715,000. So you have to, you have to calculate all of that. Again, the, the only money that has been freed up right now that has been associated with these projects is the 300,000. The addition to will be the 26,000.
So basically, we have 226,000 to work with the Streets Department to move forward.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Thank you for that explanation. I see numbers, I just want to grab them and make sure they're real or pretend they're real. Questions, concerns from the Commission?
So if it's 326,000 and they're proposing 271,000 of all of this, including Kruger, you'd still have basically 30, 56,000 for equipment if you needed it?
When you do the, the adding, don't add in the highlighted area because that is just their estimated labor and equipment. So we have a total for all streets of 237,942. And that would include Kruger and out there at Sim Street in front of City Hall.
Why don't you include labor and equipment? So we already have it, labor?
So because this, we're looking at tangible costs for this project.
It's not additional costs, it's just already there.
Right. The, that, he has to include labor and equipment when he does the LGRF.
Okay.
So...
So, so Benny, what piece of equipment are you missing?
A dump truck. I had two dump trucks go down already.
Do you have it? Is there a third one in the yard or...
Yeah, we got a third one. Uh, we're doing our LGRF projects now. I had to borrow, uh, three trucks from the county to get my chip seal job done, but...
So what are we talking about, dollar wise for a dump truck?
Anywhere from 80 to 110,000.
And Commissioner Clark, how much, how much did you estimate there would be?
No, she said 237, so you've got like just short of about 90.
So we almost have, we could almost, we could do all of the paving and get a dump truck out of the money.
Very close, yeah.
Might be shot just a couple bucks.
Yeah, pretty close is what it looks like to me.
Okay. But remember that we can't do anything else. Yeah. And that, that was my next thing. What happens if a road, uh, a sinkhole opens up? Where, where's the money come from?
I, I would say that we could, we could move all of the product like this and keep the money in the bank for the dump truck until it's full of fiscal year. And with the balance that's left, we could do it that way, yeah. And that way, we can kind of hedge... In that way, we can, we kind of hedge that bet a little bit, if something else happens that we're not seeing.
I'd like to have that safety cushion.
Right, yeah.
So, did the county charge you any money to borrow their dump trucks?
No.
So we could just maybe borrow them again if we needed them?
Yeah.
Okay.
Big, big fact to note to Manager Swingle.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we, we, we borrowed equipment from them before, and vice versa, they borrow a piece from us and now, yeah, so...
Yeah, that is nice.
That's, that's excellent, that's what you want. Exactly what you want.
It's not like renting trash trucks.
No, no. All right. Commissioner, Manager?
If I might interject just a little bit, I know, Benny, if you could clarify, I know you mentioned about leaving Kruger Street off, and when you took me around and were showing me, Kruger actually is part of the LGRF that you've already done or that you're working on, is that correct? Or is that next year?
No, that's, that, that was supposed to be on last year.
Okay.
And we ran out of money, so it didn't get done. So now we're working on, uh, between Tingly, coming up Seventh. So if we were to do Kruger between Sixth and Seventh, that would tie all that in.
And is, um, Kruger between Sixth and Seventh, the resident that you mentioned that has been complaining for quite a long time?
Yeah, on Kruger, yeah.
So I want the commission to be aware of that, this, this resident is, as though that area's been improved, has, has really been on for a timeframe as well, if you would keep that in mind, that might be...
Manager, can we...
I just want to make sure you're aware of that part.
If you're able to toss those pictures up, I think there's a good point that Benny needs to make on that Kruger Street.
Oh, yes, great.
Manager Green, I also had asked a few years back about Kruger and Eighth also, because coming around and off of that corner, people are sliding around there and causing a lot of...
Yeah, and, and we're working on that.
Just him.
That right there's... Right there's where it would tie in, we're coming up right there on Seventh. And that would come up right there, and then if we do Kruger Sixth, would tie all that corner in right there, all that would be paved. And then, next year on the LGRF, we got Eighth Street...
Okay.
That we're gonna do a block on coming up. So really, we're just gonna be shy a couple of blocks to tie all that corner in, it'll be, all be paved and sidewalks and everything.
Thank you.
I just want to follow up one, one more thing that Commissioner Clark had said. So Sims between Clancy and Daniels, I understand that the piping is really suspect, the drain, the hot water ditch, et cetera, et cetera. Is there, without spending two cents, but maybe spending a penny, is there anything that we, I mean, that is our front door to our community, that is our governmental administrative center, where people come into our community to pick up a permit or whatever, is there anything that you could do just to make it look nicer, without spending a lot of money that five years later, Commissioner Clark is going to be smiling because we're replacing everything on that block? But is there anything that we can do road-wise to beautify that stretch of road?
The cheapest thing we can do on that road to make it better would be to throw a chip seal on it, which is way cheaper than doing asphalt or any, anything like that. And, and it will seal that road up and make it look 100 times better.
And I think...
We could chip it and then put a fog seal on it.
So a chip seal cost for doing one block of a chip seal is $7,000?
It would be less than that, because you wouldn't be adding the base course into it.
Okay, Commissioner Clark, how do you feel about that?
You know, I like chip seal myself, but, um, I mean, asphalt's prettier, but it's hotter.
Yeah, it's way hotter.
And, you know...
Yeah, I mean, if you want to do something...
That road is, that road is so awful, and it's been dug up so many times, it looks like, you know...
I'd just like to...
It's just ugly.
I'd just like to present a nice table for our visitors, and people are coming in looking at our community and stuff like that.
What do you think about chip seal? Do you like it?
I love it.
I do, too.
Yeah. As a matter of fact...
It breathes.
If you're out and about and drive by on Beeter Street, we just done that, we've already done that one.
Yes. Well, if, I, I'm thinking, unless my math is wrong, if we did 63,000, and let's say 63,000 and 40,000, and let's put the chip seal...
Mayor, are you including labor and equipment?
Yes, thirty, that's, that's, that's the cushion, just in case prices go up or down or some, that's my push, as we say back east. And we're not gonna do, uh, we're gonna do 22,000, and we're not gonna do the 73,000, but we are gonna do 7,000 for chip seal, and we're gonna do Kruger for 41,000, eight, ten, fifteen, eighteen, five, seven, ten, 208,000. Which would leave a cushion of approximately 90,000 or 85,000 to Commissioner Heschler's point. How does that sound to everybody? Can you double check on that?
Yeah, I'm going to right now.
Please, before we make a vote, I appreciate that.
What a bad reputation. I know, Mr. Burnett loves me. So does Ms. Torres. I got 236,000.
But you have sixty, sixty...
Fifty-five, thirty-four, twenty-nine, fifteen, sixty-seven, and thirty-six. Doesn't include the seven chip seal.
She didn't count the, uh, labor.
Did you count?
I, I took the labor out.
Oh, okay.
So it's, it's correct, the way you were, you were figuring it, because I've kind of figured everything, and I rounded mine off, and I got 277 for everything, so if you take the 74, you're pretty close, yeah.
Okay, so that would be amazing. Uh, I guess, obviously, it's all weather, um, can you spend at least 100,000 of that in the next 16 months? Because that, that's where we're quiet, otherwise we would lose that money.
I could spend that in about a month.
Okay, that is what I wanted to hear, sir. That is the right answer, because I don't want to see capital outlay go to waste, that's for sure. All right, so how does the commission feel about doing what is being presented, doing some Kruger, leaving some money in abeyance for a whoops factor, and then to Commissioner Heschler's point, to take a look at this as we get closer to the end of this particular fiscal year?
I like it.
I agree.
I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I still move, as you noted.
Very good, very good. She wants to get out of here for real fast. I, uh, Madam Turk, you'll have to deal with, as so noted, but we'll get together on that one.
And just to clarify for that, um, that, that includes for Sims between Clancy and Daniels is chip seal.
Yes.
And not base course, correct?
Right, exactly right. Thank you for that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so I have a motion. My Mayor, Proton Whitehead, a second by Commissioner Clark and Commissioner Heschler. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carriage unanimously, thank you both for your efforts.
Thank you.
I, too, discussion, action, final approval of the tower lease agreement and rental fees for KOB, KASA, and KRQE. Our presenter is our electric division director, Mr. Bo Easley.
Morning, Mayor, morning, Mayor Pro team, commissioners, City Manager Canton. So I bring back to you the final approval of the tower lease agreements and rental fees for KOB, CASA, and KRQE. Me and Melissa Torres did have conference calls with all three individual companies. We came to agreement with them to go ahead and keep the same cost of rental agreements up on the towers. I believe CASA was $500. KOB was $500, and KRQE was going to remain $1,600. The reason why KRQE is so much higher is they broadcast quite a few more, they broadcast KRQE, Fox New Mexico, KWQ, K, KASY, KREZ, KBIM, and KRWB. I stand for any questions.
And I think, Mr. Easley, the commission doesn't have the contract that blanks fill in, so I think we always articulate that, so...
Okay.
I, I would presume we want to start the agreement November 1st, because I think that's when the first payment is what you do.
Yes, sir.
So it's how the, so the top line will say this is entered into the 1st day of November. Um, and then the first, whereas, whereas Lesor holds the right to use an occupied site on Mid-Mountain Sierra County, New Mexico, under the terms of a lease between BLM and the Lesor. And then there's a blank on paragraph one for each of these agreements, uh, which talks about the, uh, the foot level for the installation. And, you know, I'm not sure, might want to articulate those numbers, uh, 36 for one, 25 for the other two, but I wasn't sure if that was correct.
So...
The lease based Lesor, number one, Lesor agrees, or excuse me, Lesor leases to Lesi's space on the tower at the blank foot level.
Oh, they, they have different heights where they put their antennas on the tower.
So you might, you remember the numbers, I, I had 36...
One's, one's 36 foot, and the other one's 25 foot, and KRQE has not said what, what they were going to say yet.
Okay, right.
You know, Attorney Ruben, what I didn't see here, and I didn't, we didn't discuss it, uh, on Monday at the agenda meeting, and then Bo just brought up an interesting point. The reason that KRQE is more expensive, or is paying a higher rent, is that they are broadcasting for other entities. We don't have a coverage here, if KOB and/or CASA wants to broadcast for other entities, shouldn't we have something in here that allows us to increase that rent? Because that justifies the $1,600 for KRQE, and I can understand the $500 of a starting point for the other two, but what happens if they end up two years from now, as KRQE, we have locked ourselves into a long-term agreement that we have, that we can't renegotiate?
They, they have to come back to us and let us know before they do anything.
Yeah, but does it, I, I, does it say that then, then that opens up a, a renegotiation on the lease? I mean, they might have to tell us something, but I, I don't see here, and maybe I'm missing it, where then we would sit down and increase that, that, that service charge, that, that charge.
Well, how about, paragraph seven addressed that, and it says, "Lesor may in its sole discretion permit the antennas, transmitters, and other equipment of other parties and entities to be installed in the tower or in the building. If any other antennas of any kind whatsoever owned by parties other than Lesor or Lesi are subsequent mount, subsequent mounted on the tower, Lesor shall take reasonable steps to ensure the operations such an antennas will not interfere with the equipment of Lesi." Would that give us the...
Yeah, but that doesn't give us the right to negotiate with them and increase the, the value. I mean, it gives them the right to go out and, and get more customers, but it doesn't give us the right to negotiate with them. We're stuck at the $500 level. I mean, Bo just read off a litany of maybe, maybe five to eight different entities that KRQE are broadcasting, and so all I'm just questioning, I, I don't want to see us lock ourselves into a 10-year deal or whatever it is, and, it's 10 years, yeah, and we give them the right to rent more space, but we don't receive any additional revenue. And I didn't even think about that on Monday...
That's a good point.
Until Bo brought this up just now, that this antenna is, is servicing other companies. So, so basically, what we're signing is a contract, Attorney Ruben, that gives them the right to bring in customers, but we don't have the right to, to demand or renegotiate more money with them. And that's $500 a month as compared to a year, rather.
That's a year.
Around 1,600. I mean, you know, I'll take that additional $1,100 over, over 10 years, that's, that's some dollars. I, I just, um, I don't want to throw a fly in the ointment here, I know this is, Bo's been working on this a long time, but I don't want to sell the city cheap either.
I'm wondering, and maybe, you know, if Bo maybe can talk to this to other companies, maybe they'd be receptive to some sort of additional provision in the contract, just simply says that if they desire to bring in other companies, they would first have to get city approval.
Exactly.
Yeah. And, and so leave it up to, so, so we can negotiate, or Bo could negotiate, but the city, I mean, at least we have a template. KRQE is our template. Commissioner Heschler?
I'm just looking at the wording, it says, "The Lesor may permit the antennas or transmitters and other equipment of other parties to be installed." So to me, we can also deny. So if they want to bring somebody else in, we're gonna say no.
Right, well, that's why, that's why I read that sentence, that's why I thought that covered us.
The Lesor in its sole discretion.
Yeah, right. So I think we're covered, because if someone, if they want to bring something else in, and we're not, we're not getting compensated, we're gonna say no.
It's not in sole discretion, it's...
It doesn't say shall, it says may.
Yeah, that's why I read that sentence out loud, I was thinking that if someone's...
Oh, good, with the Lesor, right?
Yes.
Yeah. And so, we have the sole discretion to permit the antennas, transmitters, and other equipment...
Okay.
Yeah, that's...
All right, if you feel that that's enough legalese jay to cover us?
I, I, I thought it was my draft is that way, and that's what Mr. Easley and I talked about, that, uh, because we, you know...
Yeah, because we don't want them to just go up there and, and add any more equipment or anything without our knowledge.
Right.
And then BLM's not gonna like it either, so...
Okay, all right. I'm comfortable with that. All right, any further questions or concerns? I'll stand for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move for final approval of the tower lease agreements and rental fees for KOB, CASA, and KRQE, as presented by Bo Easley, our electric division director.
I have a motion by Mayor Proton Whitehead, a second by...
A second.
Commissioner Barker, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carriage unanimously, the next item.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Discussion, action, live work, special use permits on commercial buildings. Of course, I asked this to be brought back, and I'll be real quick to bring up everyone to speed, Commissioner Clark had to step away at our last meeting. I have a, a little bit of a concern that we only have so many commercial buildings in our city that generate GRT to help us run the city. And already, in our historic Hot Springs district, we have two commercial buildings that are strictly not live work but lived, and that doesn't do us any good. And within the last two months, we have approved two special permits for live work. And it occurred to me that if the business closes, and they go out of business, now we have a commercial business building as a residence, full-time, not generating any money, and we have no mechanism to ask them to leave, to open up another business, I will tell you that when I served with Commissioner Montgomery, Lori Montgomery, we did discuss this, and we got up to the point of coming up with some numbers that we felt would be fair and, and, and not discourage people from opening up businesses for live work downtown, but also protect the city's interest as it goes further, because in my nightmares, in 20 years, we could have 90 people living downtown, which would be great, and we don't have any businesses downtown, and then where are they gonna go? And how are we gonna get that GRT? We never were able to come to something that was fair and reasonable at that commission level, but everyone felt it was important that we do something. I think we all realized, at least I realized, the value of live work in our downtown, its security for our police force, it shows more activity of people walking on the streets. If you want to own a business, open up a business, and there's room to live in the back of that business, why should you rent a house or build a house? Doesn't make any sense. It discourages that type of growth. My concern is, what happens if the business closes down, number one? Do we require them to be open a number of days? I know Back East, I know this is not Back East, but in some of the leases that you sign, you were required to be open so many hours, so many days a week. Otherwise, you did not sign that lease. You weren't given that opportunity. This is our community, and it's different, and I'm not trying to make it what it is Back East. But I am trying to protect the community as we move forward with this gem. Someone talked about, I think it was Rhonda Britton, talked about this precious thing that we have, which is our historic Hot Springs District, that separates us from any other community on the world. I'll use Commissioner Clark's word, on the planet. And I want to make sure that that stays, that culture of that downtown stays and doesn't become in twenty years a residential area. And then where do businesses go? No place. We have no business. We've become, Mr. Fan talks about, strictly a bedwrecked community, which is beds, and you do your shopping someplace else. So that's what I wanted to have a discussion with my fellow commissioners on, to see if there is something that we could come up with, and maybe this is, we start this discussion and we continue it at the next meeting until everyone is comfortable that we think it's fair and reasonable to put in an ordinance that requires if you close your business, you have to open up another business in such a period of time, or vacate, or, and/or you have to be at least open three, four, I mean, we have businesses that are down, that are open three days a week. So, and that doesn't help us, but we can't dictate that. But maybe we can, through an ordinance, come up with something that's fair and reasonable that doesn't discourage people looking at our downtown for their new business opportunity. So I'm open for ideas and suggestions, or comments.
Well, since I haven't placed right down in that downtown area myself, a couple of them actually, um, I have a couple of thoughts. One is that, you know, a couple of these buildings are actually apartment buildings. The ones that are kind of open, that would be for businesses, a lot of the ones that I'm aware of are rented. So, that being said, I think the two special permits that we approved were on a rental property, not on a purchased property. Is that correct?
Right.
And, um, I think, I think when you have something zoned commercial, unless it's like grandfathered in a different direction, like, commercial means commercial. And I think it's nice personally to have people living in the buildings, but I also believe that if we're going to give a special use permit, and they're saying they're going to be open for business, that open for business means open for business. And you can go out of business easily in this town, you know, and I've seen that happen a lot. But then again, are they just still paying rent on those properties? It's a really difficult call.
I know. It really is a difficult call. But I think that the rents on some of our buildings downtown are probably cheaper than some of the rents of houses. So I guess.
That is a, that's a given.
So I guess my question, Commissioner Clark, is.
How long?
Do we want to go down this road at all? What happens if someone moves out of a, you know, we ask them to have a certain percentage of the space, commercial and residential. What happens if they close their business? And three years later, they're still living in the building?
They're still living in the building.
We can't throw them out, because we have no ordinance that is requiring them to do this. I mean, I understand there's renting, and then there's owning the building. I'd rather start with the renting first. I think that's the easier way. But I think we just can't allow it to be an open book, to protect the city and the future of the city.
Well, if the downtown did close up.
Yeah, well, yeah, exactly.
And that's, you know, not really what we want, in my opinion, but it's a tough one. You know, maybe, maybe it's worth having a discussion with some of the people that are actually living in these buildings and working, trying to run the businesses in the building, and see, get some input from them before we would mandate on top of them.
Would you consider to invite some of the business owners, the business owners who are renting to like a workshop or something like that?
I mean, that might be a good way to do it, because, you know, I don't want to superimpose something on somebody else without, you know, their being part of a discussion. That's just me. But I do, I agree that something needs to be done. I just don't know exactly what it would be. And it's, it's a tough call. It's a really tough call. I mean, I've got a place that's open seven days a week. I know there are other places that are only open three or four days a week. Three or four days a week is still open.
Right.
And is that where we're going to go, three or four days a week? Or is it vacant for three months, vacant for six months, or? And talk to some of the other owners of the buildings downtown that are renting now, and see how they feel. If it was mandated on them that, you know, the business closed down, then they lose their tenant. So that's, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
If the commission would like to proceed with that, I wouldn't have a problem with setting something up with the business owners, so we could see what they think about it and bring a report back to the commission.
Alright, I will, yeah, alright. I know Commissioner Heschler.
Couple of comments I'd like to make. One is, I would like to have somebody from your staff, if you know some of the communities are already doing this, and maybe even ask them for a copy of their special use permit to see what they're doing, and how they're doing it. The other comment I guess I want to make is that businesses in the downtown area are the lifeblood of our downtown area. And one business being open, other businesses feed upon that. And if they turn residential, all of a sudden, we're not only losing G R T, but our businesses are losing the opportunity of adding extra customers.
Yeah.
And so I think we have to go at this with that in mind. And so I would like to see on the special use permit that they would be open. We define a permanent, open seventy hours per week of operation for a commercial business, and/or that you have to vacate within six months if the business fails or whatever else. But we stipulate those things out. And I'm hoping some other communities have had this discussion, that have already instituted something similar, and I'd like to get a copy of their special use permits, or how they go about doing this all of a sudden. We have more information to make our decision.
I like that, too.
Attorney Rubin, following up on what Commissioner Heschler just said, not the hours, and a closed business does not serve this community at all. It's hurtful. Legally, do we have, legally, we have the right to craft an ordinance that puts restrictions and deliverables on a special use permit?
I believe you do. And you talked about that, and I believe you do. I'll probably want to maybe check around, get some sample language, but I believe you had authority. I mean, you're the governing body, and you have the rights to do what you feel is appropriate.
I just don't want to spend time, and all of a sudden legal comes back and say, "You can't do this."
I'll be dealing with that.
Okay.
So if it's, if it's the commercial district, Attorney Rubin, if it's the commercial district, would we have to make it a blanket through the entire commercial district? Or just that downtown area, the one-way streets?
I frankly, I certainly, my focus was downtown, when all of a sudden we had two special use permits hit us, live work within two months. And that's what started me thinking about this. But I would like this to be, if we're going to try to eventually craft an ordinance that's fair and reasonable, that doesn't, is not an impediment, impediment to people opening up a business and living in a building. It should be for all commercially zoned areas of the city.
I'd rather, I would rather draft you were decisive, you know, doing.
But everybody's treated the same.
Yeah, I don't want to say that you're more important.
It's not like the latest section, it would be the entire commercial district.
So are the existing ones, are they going to be grandfathered in?
Yeah, they would be grandfathered in, Commissioner Barker, this will be done in the past. But I just don't want to see a trend that takes away and takes away, and we only have so much available commercial space to begin with. So, and as our population grows, hopefully, and businesses and things happen, people will be looking at T R C as business opportunities. And I want to make sure that there are buildings available for that to open up a business in, and not have, you know, curtains drawn over the front like on one building, and that's it. You know, they're living in the back. Alright, so.
So research.
So if we could do that, Commissioner Heschler, I like, I love that idea, of looking at other communities, see if they've had this problem, how they have handled it. And we will be looking for hours of operation. I would be looking for what happens if their business fails, and they move, and the business closes, but they're still living in a commercial building. And then, timely fashion, if you could get back to us on that, then we can take it another step.
Okay. I'd be happy to hear that.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
When we were discussing the agenda on Monday, I mentioned to you, unfortunately, I have to leave.
Eleven thirty.
Yeah, twelve o'clock, I have news and messages. I have to leave at twelve o'clock to go to Las Cruces. I have a hearing this afternoon. And I mentioned, we're probably going to be needing to be about a half an hour for executive session. So I suggested eleven thirty if you're going to executive session. So it's, I just wanted to mention that.
Okay, so let me see if we can get, finish the next ones real quick. Award I T B, next item is J I, discussion action award, I T B eighteen slash nineteen slash oh oh three for well number eight, rehabilitation project. Our presenter is our purchasing officer, Ms. Pat Wood.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners. We're here to award I T B eighteen dash nineteen dash zero zero three, well have number eight rehab project. We had a bid opening on Tuesday, September twenty-fifth at two P M. We received three bids for this project. A recommendation is being made by Wilson and Company to award the bid to Hydrogeologic Services Incorporated in the amount of a hundred thousand sixty-nine dollars and fifty-five cents. I stand for any questions.
Okay, any questions? Mr. Clark.
Ms. Wood, when you put this bid out, did Wilson do the bid item breakdown of what needed to be done on that well?
Yes.
My concern is that I really don't see that you're relining the well. And I'm wondering, just because I have wells, probably, why we're not doing that? And we're coronating, we're acid, we're aciding, we're putting a new shaft turbine pump in, we're doing all those kind of things, but we're not recasing the well.
They, um.
They didn't make it needed to be recased?
Last May, they did, last May, they went in there, and they did videos, and they knew what they had to do to this well to get it going.
Was it Wilson that came up with that, that what needed to be done?
Yes.
Or did you have a well driller come up and do it?
There was a well driller.
That, that did the video of it?
Alpha Southwest came in and did the inspection.
Okay. Is it double case, do you know?
No, I don't.
And the money is already appropriated?
Yes, the money came from the C D B G, let more of this.
How deep is that well?
Uh, to be honest, I can't.
Commissioner, Mayor, Mayor Protam, my only concern is that if it, if we're doing all of this money, and we're not recasing it, if it needs to be, it depends on how it's been built. If it was built like an oil well, or if it was built just as a water well, that casing might collapse on us also, and why we're not doing the whole thing at the same time is my concern. But if you feel that this is good patent, and that Wilson feels that we didn't need it, then I'll go along with you. But I'm just making that concern vocalized, that it's not being recased.
Would it be possible, Ms. Wood, to get, you mentioned the name of the company that did the analysis?
Alpha Southwest.
Would it be possible to get that engineering report to Commissioner Clark?
Sure.
So she could have a comfort level?
That's my discomfort, is you just never know what the, you know, how close it is to breach.
With that, would you get a life expectancy of the casing that is there now?
That's a good, that's a good way to go.
That we're experiencing, if any, that would be nice to have.
Because we don't know if it's concreted in, or if it's cast ironed in. It depends on how it was built. And I know the wells downtown have all been built differently. And I suspect that some of our city wells have been built differently, too.
So I have a question. Are we under a time frame strength to award this?
Before you, ask that mayor to have a response from Arnie that it does not need recasing. Well, it does not need recasing.
Okay.
Okay.
That would help with those questions.
It doesn't mean it might not need it in five years. Women still like to see your reports.
Yeah. You've got to get those reports. Any further questions or concerns? If not, I will stand for motion.
Mayor Green, I'd like to move that we award I T B eighteen dash nineteen dash zero seven three for well number eight rehabilitation project, bid to Hydrogeologic Services Incorporated for one hundred thousand six hundred dollars and fifty cents. As presented by Pat Wood, with a stipulation that we contact the company that she suggested just to see the, to see if the well itself needs to be recased, and to try to determine the life expectancy of the well, of the well casing, so that, in case we have to make a draw or decision, or make any changes we can.
Okay. I'm sure that Arnie has those reports that they did last May.
And I'll second that.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Heschler, and a second by Mayor Protam Whitehead. Any further discussion? Hearing on all is in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Carry on.
Thank you.
Next item, let's see if we can, Jay, how are we doing, Jay, how are we doing on time? Ms. Morris, how long is it going to take you to do your presentation?
We can do it in five minutes.
Okay, let's see.
You can, you can drive seventy-eight miles.
I was going to say, anyway. Sorry to have that back into my brain.
Sorry to put the pressure on you. Commissioner Heschler, start the clock. I have five minutes.
Mayor, Mayor Protam, Commissioners, this is the first quarter, that's from July first through September thirtieth, to go over our revenue and expenditures. At this time, I will just highlight and summarize. The general fund is up at twenty-seven point five seven. As you know, the first quarter, we should be at twenty-five percent. On the revenue, anything less than twenty-five percent is utility office, Fund Five Oh Two, which is twenty-one point eight five. Solid waste, Fund Five Oh Five, is down twenty-three point six nine. And golf course, Fund Five Oh Eight, is down nineteen fifty-six. Going on to the expenditures, again, just summarizing, the one to bring attention would be the city manager's office. It's up forty-six point four eight. However, looking at the general fund as an overall, we are within our boundaries, it's at twenty-two point eight eight. On our enterprises, including the swimming pool, our expenditures for higher than the twenty-five percent is the water division, Fund Five Oh Four. They're up thirty-one point twenty. Solid waste, Fund Five Oh Five, they are up thirty point two six. And wastewater, they're up thirty-seven point seven six. Airport, Fund Five Oh Nine, they're up thirty-four point nine seven. Moving on to our revenue and expenditures for special funds, the one to bring your attention for the revenue, the L E P F, we are up ninety-one point three seven. Expenditures to bring to your attention on the special revenue is the L E P F, and we are up twenty-seven point nine nine. Moving on to our next, on our capital revenue and expenditures, the summarize for capital, Fund Three Hundreds, we're up on our impact fees for revenue, three four nine two point nineteen. Fund Three Fourteen. Fund Three Fourteen, the CDBG, revenues up two hundred fifteen point seven one. Expenditures over twenty five percent, Veterans Ball, twenty seven twenty two. Fund Five Oh Five, general capital, seventy three point eight five. And capital for utilities, thirty two point eight zero. Moving on to the J R T five year comparison.
Melissa, I think we have a battery. It's gone out.
Go ahead. Five year comparison, revenue to J R T up. Hold for the, for the quarter was nine hundred and six thousand. So that brought up for comparison to last fiscal year, increase of a hundred and thirteen thousand. And our largest tab, we are up twelve thousand, four hundred and eight dollars. Am I standing for any questions at this time?
Any questions?
I have a ton, but I'm not going to do it right now. I'm going to let Jake talk to us.
Yeah, you can always come back, resume the open session if you'd like to after we do close session. That's something, you know, I hate to see you change yourself on these other items.
We could do that.
Yeah, actually, the executive session we're going in is just, we're going to deal with just item one and item two for information.
Okay.
And then, because I think item three is going to take a little bit longer.
All right.
And you're going to have to go to court anyway, or leave to Las Cruces. So if you could possibly stay around, would that be possible? Okay, so I'm going to say we are closing right now, open session. And I'll need a motion to go into executive session for the first two items.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we go into executive session under L one, Threatened or Pending Litigation, Augustine Plains Ranch LLC versus Tom Blaine Edel, pursuant to ten fifteen one eight seven. And number L two, Threatened or Pending Litigation, Ash Ball versus City of Truth or Consequences, pursuant to ten fifteen one eight seven.
I have a motion by Mayor Prost and Whitehead. Can I have a second? A second, and I need roll call, please. Commissioner Clark, a second.
Honorable Steve Gray.
Yes.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead.
Aye.
Honorable Ralph Heschler.
Yes.
Honorable Kathy Clark.
Kathy?
Kathy.
Need your vote.
Say yes.
Yeah.
Honorable Paul Bockus. We are now in executive session.
We are in executive session. Staff will make this as quickly as possible. Okay, Ashen, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to stipulate that only matters pertaining to L one, Threatened or Pending Litigation, Augustine Plains Ranch LLC versus Tom Blaine Edel, pursuant to ten fifteen one eight seven. And L two, Threatened or Pending Litigation, Ash Ball versus City of Truth or Consequences, pursuant to ten fifteen one eight seven, was discussed and no action taken.
Okay, is there any motion anyone would like to make before we recess for two minutes for a bathroom break?
Mayor Green, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
That in regards to Threatened or Pending Litigation, Augustine Plains Ranch LLC versus Tom Blaine Edel, that we authorize our attorney, Mr. Appell, to follow an appearance on a limited basis to address this litigation and things important.
I have a motion by Commissioner Heschler, a second by.
I'll second that motion.
Mayor Prost and Whitehead. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, we are going to take a three minute break. It just got longer. And we are on the budget. The first quarter report, and Commissioner Clark, you had some questions that we could, that we could not cover before we had a break.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Melissa, for hanging out.
Yes, ma'am.
So the question I asked Melissa, and I think it's important for us to know, is in the expense columns, a lot of them are over. We got electric, water, solid waste, and wastewater, airport, and insurance and utilities. We know about the city manager, why that one's over. And so I was asking her whether it was, what part of the line items have made those expenses go up? And if you wouldn't mind answering that question for everybody, she already kind of answered it for me. I think it's important that you all hear it.
Sharing is good.
Yes. So to answer Commissioner Clark's question regarding if it is the personnel or if it's operating, it is operating. So if you notice, we remapped a lot of the quarterly reports. And one of the things that I did was I broke down the personnel and the operation. So if you look at, if you look at the column, the first column shows budget. That's the budget that we gave for that department. The next column is personnel. The next column is operating, and then the total. And so that will help you guys out, because we use vacancy savings quite a bit. You can tell, okay, is this going to be personnel because of this, or is it really operational? And as you can see, it is operational. That's causing them to go over the percentage of the twenty five percent.
Did we have the personnel budget from the, from the last year to compare?
No, no, ma'am, we did not. This is something I did.
Taking your word for it, but that's, it's nice to have them broken apart.
Yes, ma'am.
But it would be nice to know what personnel was budgeted at, and operations budgeted at. Because if they're expense costs, we don't know if it's, you know, like utilities being swapped into that particular department, or if it's the cost of materials, you know, exactly what it is. But this is quite a few departments to have over, in my opinion. I don't know. Comments?
Is there a point where the person that's in charge of their budget, I'm assuming the director and the manager are?
Yes, sir.
They let you know that, hey, I know I'm going over my budget, but this is what I need? Is there justification, or do they go through that process?
Since I've been as finance director, I have not ever had any kind of relationships regarding what is purchased, what is not purchased. All of that has been directed from the director to the city manager. If the city manager felt that there was going to be an additional expense that was going to be high, sometimes he would communicate that to me, sometimes he wouldn't. So to answer that question, Commissioner Heschler, at this time, I don't have control over what is being pushed through the city of expenses and what's not. Other than me as a finance director, just making sure procurement is being followed, ensuring that we are, we're within, if it's a contract, or agreement, or an RFP, any kind of procurement is within the means. That's pretty much all we do, that we've been allowed to do in finance regarding that.
So Melissa, aren't each one of the department heads responsible for staying it within their budget?
Yes, ma'am. And what we do is we give a quarterly report. Every department head meeting, and that's something that I started. Every quarterly, I give them a handout, explains what quarter you're supposed to be at, tells them the percentages, where their revenue is, where their expenditures are, where their negatives are going to be. They need to clean up all their negatives per quarter. But again, that relation, that's the only relationship we have regarding with the departments, is just be informative and request for them to do their, clean up their negatives. At this point, the departments that only less than half have cleaned up their negatives. Because like I said, we don't have any, it's just a suggestion at this point.
But that's the city manager's position, is to get on the department heads, not necessarily yours, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And I will let the commission know that I've been, you know, since I've been here, you know, I've needed all the help I can. So especially finding out what we're seeing, or where we can find it. So I've tried really hard to include her in a lot of that.
You haven't been senior for long enough, right?
Yeah. True, but I'm just letting you know that I've.
My not putting you in that position.
No, no, in no way am I putting you in that position, Renee. All you've done is just taken over what was already established. And I just wanted to express that to the commission. That's, that's the relationship has been established between the departments and finance.
Well, that's something we can address in the second session as well.
So when someone needs, a department head needs a widget, have your hair budgeted, and that requisition goes into Pat's office. Does she keep a running total of the budgets of each department? So when she's pulling down and pulling down and ordering for them and ordering for them, would she then report that to you, or doesn't that exist? I mean, I was just thinking about another stock gap measure. If she, if there's, if she's the person who's draining the swamp because of purchase orders, does she know how much money is in that swamp to begin with?
She does. So our Tyler system, at the beginning of the fiscal year, we have to load what D F A and yourselves have approved. Based on that, it's based on itemized. Each accounting line has its own budget. And when a purchase is being done, she's able to see if this was something that is within the means of their budget, or if it's not. Now, I just implemented about six months ago, because there was a lot of departments that were putting their departments in the negative, negative in those accounting lines. And we were getting the go ahead on our previous city manager to go ahead and, and keep on going. However, again, we have to ensure that we're complying with D F A too, you know? And so here we are, expending stuff that we don't even have money in that particular account. So one of the things that I implemented about six months ago, I said, okay, if you have no money, I advise Pat, because that's what's nice about being financed, where you're able to have that umbrella that you can oversee and say, okay, Pat, at this point, don't approve any purchases that are in the negative, unless they have talked to Renee or myself to do a budget transfer. So what we need you guys to do in the departments is, you can go ahead, put the requisition in the system, but just put it as a hold until we transfer the funds to make sure that it's a clear purchase. And that's what we've been having to do. For the most part, it's working really good, but some departments are still old school, so they're having a hard time to understand why that's so important. But it's like writing a check without no money, in a sense. You know, we, we have to be cognit of that, of our budgets, and ensure that we're not being operating our accounting line set at negative.
Okay, and the other question I just had, so on account number, department number, ten ten, Community Development, we've got that budget at about almost a quarter of a million dollars, two hundred and twenty four thousand. So who exactly is under right now? We have no Susanna Diller, we have no Bill Slidham. Who, who is in that, who's in that two hundred and twenty four thousand dollars?
So in that right now, you have Tracy Burnett as your grant coordinator in the community development. But then you also have Susan Diller, which we're still budgeting the rest of her wages and her benefits. You have to do that, because if we don't, then we're going to put that particular expenditure into a negative. You know, that's one thing that we weren't doing before I came. And bless the department's hearts, I don't know how they did it. Because previous, before I came, the benefits weren't even figured into these employees. And they have to be figured into, because guess where they're going to have to get the money from? Their operational money. And that's what they were doing. They were taking their operational money and covering these benefits. That's something that changed when I came and oversaw payroll, is as soon as we load a budget, we're loading benefits too. So that particular department isn't having to worry about their operational funds to cover those benefits. Because you're looking at, if it's a family, almost ten thousand dollars. That's a lot of money for somebody like Streets or Facilities to, to, to have to account for that, when we're already using sixty nine percent of our, our budgets in wages and personnel.
So, so by that, then I, if we were not to fulfill those, any of those vacancies, there's a little bit of money there at the end of the year, then that accounts.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Left at the way that it was, just Tracy and this took care of whatever our obligations for Susanna were on.
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Man, I believe there's also, if I'm wrong, was there another part-time position that was budgeted for, but never proceeded to open the position?
Um, it was.
Susanna indicated.
No, ma'am, there, there wasn't. The commission, basically, one of the open one that we had was for the events coordinator, civic center coordinator. And you guys all agreed to go ahead and. Yeah, freeze that one, and then also reallocate it based on Peter Bockus. So we're paying for Peter Bockus' wages under that.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question. Melissa, if I, I'm just going to put it out there, if I was to request a list of the budget by breakdown, each department, each person that works in that department, could I get a breakdown of, of that whole budget for that department as to what they're getting paid, what their benefits are and, and whatnot? I mean, just a yes or no.
Yes, ma'am, you can.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks for answering those questions, Melissa. I appreciate it.
Any other questions? So. Let me ask you to put your genie hat on right now. Do you see any road bumps moving forward? As we sit right now, as, as our commitments have been made, as our financial decisions have been made, and staff has been tasked and, and stuff like that, do you see anything that this commission should be aware of as we move forward? Because I'd love to have an open checkbook and just make everyone smile. Is there anything we should be made aware of that, that is going to be a bump in the road?
In my expertise, in my opinion, and this is my opinion, you have water in the situation we have. A lot of the wells are going down. Right now, I think Colonia's is very important, but I think Commissioner Clark was hitting it right in the head. That right now is our lowest enterprises. We have barely two hundred thousand dollars in that account. A hundred thousand dollars to go into something we're not sure of? You, we also have to realize, and I'm sure you guys do, but USDA is wonderful, but know what comes with it. What comes with it is our revenue is, goes to where they tell us it goes to, for forty years. Our bonds are committed to them, because they're the ones that control everything now. So as, as I said, USDA is wonderful, but know that there comes a large price that goes with that. The same thing is with water. Once we hit with water with USDA, our revenue will be told where our revenue needs to go. Our bonds will be told where our bonds need to be going. And they dictate us how we need to budget on those certain departments. And I'll tell you what, we had to do our annual yearly report for USDA, and it was strenuous because of all the requirements that they make us do. So I'm, I'm just saying that these big projects, in my professional opinion, we need to start looking at a five-year strategic plan and start building into these projects. And we also need to start looking at our day-to-day operation, because that's starting to go down on the wayside. We're spending so much money on the new, 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 that we're losing some of our old, and we need to start looking at that. Fuel farm, wonderful. Love that we got three stages back to back, but what did it cost us? Because it had to come out of the general fund, where we had to make up that money. And it might have been just sixty thousand or seventy thousand, but that's seventy thousand or sixty thousand that we could have used on our day-to-day stuff. Couple of water lines to fix one of our wells, you know, to, so that's just my opinion. I, I think that you guys have wonderful ideas, no disrespect, but they're huge with huge prices. And we have to start looking at stuff with a five-year strategic plan and start building into that. You know, I, I mean, think when we buy a house, do we just buy a house like that? Or do we start planning for buying a house by saving money and preparing for that? And, and so that's all I would urge you guys, is that we got to start having strategic plannings as a commission, as finance, as a city, and start building these big projects that are coming into place that you guys want to do. I think they're wonderful ideas, but we're going to start falling into a hole more and more, especially when we start bringing USDA or Colonia's. Colonia's also has strings to it too. Colonia's also has strings to it too, that we'll be obligated to do.
So, we can stagger these things out?
Yes, sir.
Bring you five, eight years instead of trying to do everything possible.
Yes, sir. And, and, and no disrespect, I, I know all of you guys want to make a change, but back-to-back new is, you have to look at your old too. Our old is falling at the wayside, look at our wells. You know, that's something that really needs attention. If we don't repair well eight, we are in trouble this summer. We will be completely out of water, and that's something that wasn't relayed to you guys. We had no choice but to find that money, and thank goodness we had that money at CDBG, but if we didn't, with $200,000 in the accounts, I mean, we can't take it from wastewater anymore because USDA tells us, no, 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 that's not wastewater, that's water, it's portable. And that's what they used to do in the past. 50 here, 50 here, 50,000 here, we can't do it anymore. So, sorry, I'm a little passionate about it, but, you know, this, I was born and raised here, and when I came here, I just wanted to make this a better place, but why is it so hard sometimes to do better? I don't understand.
I think this commission needed to hear that.
Yeah.
Thank you, Melissa. I know that's tough. I know that's tough, but we need to know that too, and we need to have a little better kind of-
Grass for them.
Plan, yeah.
Thank you, for honesty.
Appreciate it.
Okay, um, the next item is the last item, and I'll, I'm gonna-
I thought it was pizza, the next item.
It's coming, it's coming.
I, I agree. When that knock on the door comes, I will shut up.
It's coming.
Okay, I'll, I'll try to get it.
You don't believe it? You don't believe he'll shut up, or you don't believe the pizza will come?
Um, so, well, for ten, for ten, ten years, I have heard people stand up in front of me, in front of us, and say, I was born here. Well, when's the last time that anyone made the decision where you could be born? Basically, it took me about five years to realize that what they're really saying is, I'm honoring my parents, that they were here and they decided to stay here. We have heard it's thems and those, it's the old timers, it's the new timers, and frankly, it's become, it's divisive, our whole country is divisive right now, by the way. And I thought, what could we do to make our city try and come together and not be so he said, she said, I was here longer than you, therefore my voice is more valuable, or my opinion is more important than yours? The person who comes into TRC, buys, rents, the minute they become a TRC, they have the same value as anybody else, as far as I'm concerned. So, I thought, how do we try to pull the community together? And what, the people who were born here and stay here have the same DNA as the people who choose to move to Truth or Consequences. So, and I wanna thank Renee for this, I thought about the idea of a program. I chose TRC in the form of a heart and a pin that everyone would wear. We would get 6,000 of these, every citizen who lives here and chose to move here or to stay here, that's what keeps us common, that's the commonality of us all. And I thought it'd be a great marketing, I think we'd get a lot of publicity, I, I think we'd get, we'd get us book of world records, uh, you know, so that was just my idea for you guys to kinda just think about it, we don't have to necessarily take action now. If you think it's a good idea, I'll look for the money, uh, I, I think these pins are about a buck each or something like that, so we're talking about 6,000. But can you imagine 6,000 people, kids going to school, adults walking down the streets, and everyone wearing a pin that's recognized for, that says, I chose TRC? That makes us all equal. And I think that's all we ever asked of anybody, is to be equal with someone else. That's my idea.
Which line item are you gonna have Melissa take it out of?
No, I said I'll find the money.
You'll find the money?
After that. You think I would dare look at that woman in her face and ask her for 6,000? Are you kidding me? I'll try to find the money. Um, so, I mean, it's just a thought, I mean, I, I, it, it, you look, I try not to, sometimes when Paul will say, did you read his letter from the editor or this person's sayings? I don't even read those letters. But it's like, the last one was, was a guy that, I moved here for tw- I've lived here for 20 years, and, and I'm made to feel like my voice is not as important as someone who was born here, or was lived here for 21 years, or whatever. And, and how do we break through that? Maybe in small communities, uh, the last community we lived in, there were 37 people living there for, on our farm, uh, how do you get rid of that? And how do you say, we are all here together, we all want the best for our community? And I thought this might be one way to break through that, just a thought. Comments or, or? Sandy was so impressed, she walked out on me.
Did you get food?
The story of my life.
I think it's, I think it's done some merit to it, Steve, it's, um, beginning everybody to wear this, the little badges.
Yeah, you offer parts.
Why don't you just give five, one for each of us, and one for Renee, and one for Angela?
Well, it might be more expensive on that way, we could start-
We could all buy our own that way.
We could start and see if people say, what is that about? And stand.
You know, the only thing that differentiates these people is that the longer you're in the community, the more knowledge you have about the community.
Right.
And, and that's it, and so, so then you maybe have a sense of that entitlement.
Right.
But, but I, but I agree with you 100 percent, it doesn't give you any more rights.
Right, exactly.
We all have the same thoughts.
And there are people who feel that because they are here longer, they have rights that we don't have. And, you know, we've been here, I don't know how long, Kathy came in 1990, right?
93.
And we moved here in 2000.
87.
You know, 87, you know, we sat-
Oh, whoa!
Don't you walk on my side, you liar!
We're still recording open mic, okay?
Yeah, that's okay. Uh, so, uh, but, you know, I, I, so, that, that was my thought, you know, to try to do something, you know, we're, I, I think to, to kind of a sense of, of instill unity and community pride. You ask, we go to football games, it's tied to pride, the sport events, it's the pride of, of being part of a community, that we all are equal.
Oh, what the ladies gonna say about that?
Okay, so, um, I'm gonna suggest that we are, uh, any further discussion on this item?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Um, the suggestion is that we acquire these pins, and I'm thinking it might be a great idea, for a dollar a piece, people walking towards offices, pay a dollar to get them.
I, I'd like to be part of that, you know, because the papers-
They have to go to the utility office.
Right, wherever, but we can advertise it and do what we need to do, get anybody that wants to get their buck.
Yeah.
Come on and get your pin and show us your community pride, I think that's something to do.
I like it, I like that idea. Get some, get some, get a hundred pins or whatever.
We'll get a quote from the Food and Center and see what we can come up with.
If you could do that, maybe the same company that you bought, you bought these from, it's always called Food Center, finally I can get some prices, and I pledge the first dollar I salary back every month to the community, so.
Some of your big sellers, you did?
Yeah. Paula keeps on saying, you know, she took a look at her two months ago, she said, your $50 turned into $91.23, she dumped it, it didn't last.
Oh, you got a raise and you didn't?
Yeah, hook keeps, no, no, the rest came out of the pocket.
Oh.
Why don't you guys get, uh, we're just looking for some food.
Pizza.
I think we are, we are adjourned.
We're not, we started to, but we don't have to adjourn into executive sessions, too.
Yeah, okay, uh-
But we haven't heard the report yet.
No.
Oh.
Oh, any reports?
I know.
No reports.
I have quick, I can make it really, really fast.
So?
November 11th, Betterland's well unveiling.
Right.
Um, and Chief Aragon is returning to work Monday the 29th. He will be since, since, you know, public, and they can hear it if they need to, but he'll be gone for two weeks at his re-certification class anyway.
Okay.
Beginning, um, Monday, so, and I just did wanna appreciate everyone's patience and my, express my extreme, express my extreme respect to everybody that was involved, um, and to Chief, Deputy Chief Baca Dopp, who took the reins. Wanted to thank Attorney Rubin for letting me be part of witnessing his experience and skills, um, related to bringing the city to a final resolution with the Beach case. Um, and there's a public hearing for the roundabouts on November 14th at 4:00 P.M. And the rest for, just sending you that.
Could you, since we have no press here, I don't know if they're listening or not, could you send out, could you send out a, uh?
A quick note.
A quick note, uh, about the chief of those two figures?
Sure.
That might calm some.
Can I run it through you? Can I run it through someone? Yeah, I kinda have something in my head, and we kinda talked about something already.
Do it, let's just do it.
Very minimal, just that he's back on the, thank you.
Yeah, I think the, the, the community has a right to know.
Sure.
Uh, excellent, uh-
Pizza's good, guys.
Good pizza, we know where it comes from. Uh, any further, um, reports? I, I say that we, um, we can take a recess before we go into executive session, is that legal?
You can, or you can, you can make a motion going to executive session, um, and we'll be recessing before they start executive session.
So, I will have to entertain a motion to go back into executive session for-
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we go into executive session under L3 Limited Personnel Matters, City Manager Recruitment pursuant to 10151H2.
I have a motion. And I have a second. Further discussion, hearing none, not a personal roll call.
Honorable Steve Green?
Yes.
Honorable Sandra Whitehead?
Aye.
Honorable Ross Heschler?
Yes.
Honorable Kathy Clark?
Aye.
Honorable Paul Baca?
We are in executive session. Shut down the lights.